Calling to order, the Needham Select Board Meeting for May 13. This meeting is being broadcast by the Needham Channel for the town's YouTube channel and for the Needham Channel itself and via Zoom and is being recorded for publication by the Needham Observer and the Needham Local. In accordance with the open meeting law, if anyone else in attendance wishes to record the meeting, they are required to notify the Chair first so that the Chair may inform our other attendees. Is there anyone in the room who plans to record? Okay, I haven't received a notification from anyone else, so we're going to move right along. Before we get started with our public comments, I just want to make sure that everyone here understands the difference between our regular public comment and the public hearing for which I imagine many of you are in attendance later on. We are going to accept public comment now if anyone's interested. Later on in the program, we have an agenda item for our envisioned hearing. If you want to make notes or comments about envisioned, it would be better if you waited and did it then. The time on our agenda, of course, is just an estimate as it always is in our select board meetings, so it's just an approximation. We, of course, will extend as long as we need to to accommodate any number of commentators. The presentation has also been shortened to allow for a bit more time for comments, so we will allow all comments, you know, until we're done, so no need to worry about the time. Okay, and since everyone's here and we have this attention, I just wanted to make one note, which is that the Tree Preservation Planning Committee is holding a public hearing. It seems to me there's probably more people here now than there will be at the end of the meeting, and so I want to note that it's on June 4th, right here in Powers Hall at 7:30 PM, and you should attend. Okay, so is there anyone in the room who is here for public comment? Thank you. Anybody online? Okay, then we're going to move right along to our Public Works Week proclamation. Oh, sorry. Come on up.
Thank you. Dave Sherman, Rosemary Way. You have on your agenda tonight a suggested resolution to approve the resolution passed on March 25th by the Needham Committee. In order to understand just how flawed that resolution is, first you have to, it's basically a piece of tunnel vision. Among its many, among its condemnations of many different forms of bigotry, which of course, you know, we should all support that condemnation, it fails to mention antisemitism. And incidentally, it fails to mention Islamophobia. It is worded in such a way that you really have to stretch quite a bit to interpret it as including a condemnation of Islamophobia and even further to interpret it as a statement against antisemitism. Now, in order to understand what the Board, what the Board really should do about this, you have to understand a little bit of history. In November of '23, about three weeks or so after the October 7th attacks, the Human Rights Commission passed a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza's war on Israel, except they called on ceasefire from both sides. And this was at a time that antisemitism was already spiking locally and even in town, as I'll get to in just a moment, for the simple problem that, you know, the Jews decided to defend themselves. That kind of opposition to Jews defending themselves is in and of itself antisemitism. However, the Human Rights Committee did this, and then about three days or so later, I think it may have been five days later, there was a bomb threat against one of our synagogues. And Hockenkreusen, otherwise known incorrectly as Swastika, started to show up at the schools. And so you can't prove that this wasn't enabled by that initial Human Rights Committee resolution. Then they come along in March of this year and they pass this resolution, which, you know, talk about not being seen. I will certainly respect any spokesman from Islamic or the Arab community in town who wants to speak out about the exclusion of Islamophobia from their, from the resolution, but I'm not an expert in that. What I can tell you is that we're under siege here, and the Human Rights Committee risks needing to change its name to the Human Wrongs Committee rather than have its resolution supported. So what I recommend and request the Select Board do with this is either send it back to the Human Rights Committee with a mandate to change the resolution, to expand it beyond its current tunnel vision, or to simply condemn it as it is, a separate statement condemning as it is, and to consider any impeachment proceedings that might exist against Human Rights Committee members, and in the future to screen Human Rights Committee candidates to make sure that they're willing to support all marginalized groups in Needham. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any others who are behind the camera? Okay, so then we're going to move on to our Public Works Week proclamation. So we'll welcome up Karis Lustig and Shane Mark, our Director and Assistant Director of Public Works. Welcome. So before we get started, I just want to say that, am I still too soft? Too much now? Okay, so before we get started, I just wanted to say that I want to hear everything that you have in store and everything, but I also just, I just wanted to say that since starting this position, it's been one of the most relevatory sort of new understandings that I've had about the way town works is what Public Works does and how much you're involved in and how much we rely on you without even realizing it. When we're all smuggled in our beds enjoying the snow and the snow day and you guys are out there plowing and before and after games, getting fields ready and fixing them afterwards. Every year we want to recognize you, and this year especially, I'm very happy that we have the best way to do it, which is that Town Meeting has just approved construction funds for a safe and healthy and appropriate addition to the Cogswell Building that is going to help improve conditions at the DPW for all of the people who work there, and I'm just very happy and proud that that is underway. So, so listen, what's going on?
Thank you so much for the panel, we appreciate it, Madam Chair. We do want to say thank you very much to the Town Meeting members and to the residents for passing that. That's a first, huge step for the employees at the Public Works, and we really appreciate the support for that. This year, the American Public Works Association theme for Public Works Week is People, Purpose, and Presence, and that really is the cornerstone ideals that motivate Public Works professionals to serve our communities. Meeting the needs of the people that we serve gives us our sense of purpose, and our presence improves the quality of life for all those who live, work, or visit our great town here in Needham. And we'd like to promote Public Works as often as we can, and so this gives us an opportunity for the next week to recognize our first responders. Back in 2003, we were recognized as first responders by a presidential declaration, and we refer to ourselves as the silent arm of Public Works because when we're doing our jobs effectively, oftentimes people don't see or recognize the work that we do. But if we do something incorrect and there's a water break or there's something that happens, people know, and that's where they really see our staff and the work that our staff does. So we are the silent arm of Public Works and we are first responders, and we really try to promote that to our employees within our department and recognize that police and fire aren't able to do their jobs effectively if we don't maintain the roads and we don't keep the water flowing and keep the streets plowed and in good shape for them to respond to the emergencies they have to. And almost at every emergency, especially major emergencies, you see Public Works component there, whether we're setting up the barricades or providing support to police and fire, we're there behind the scenes. So some of the things we're doing this week to recognize our employees is starting this Saturday in conjunction with the park and recreation for the touch of trucks. We're providing many of our vehicles for the community to come and play and toy around with and jump in, and we'll be doing that this coming Saturday at De Fazio, and in conjunction with that, we're starting a week food drive, and we call it Public Works Fill a Truck. And so we encourage anybody to come to the touch truck event to bring some donations. All the donations that we receive for the next week for the food drive will come here locally and go to the Needham Community Center and to the food bank there, so that's where all the food goes. We'll have donation boxes at Town Hall, the Public Services Administration Building, Rosemary Recreation Center, the Center at the Heights, the library, and a new addition this year at the Public Safety Building. So we really encourage everyone to bring some donations for food, and all that will stay here locally, so, and support the community here. And lastly, we're going to be doing divisional highlights this week. So beginning on Saturday, we'll highlight a division, we'll push that on on social media, and each day for the next seven to eight days, there'll be a brief description of each division and what the division does and the support that they provide to the community with a group photo of that division. So we really want to say thank you to the Select Board to recognize and do this proclamation for Public Works and for our employees because it is a huge morale for them to have them recognized by the Select Board for all the great work that they do. And I'll turn it over to Karis.
Sorry, just add to that, I think one of the things we get asked all the time is like, what would be helpful for us? And I think one of the things is to talk to people about careers in Public Works. We've done an immense amount of hiring in the past year, I think over 20 new hires, and we're going to have a lot more to go. So if you have anyone who's looking for a career change or career opportunities, send them one. Send. Send.
I got you. I got you. Send them your way.
She gets choked up when she talks about Public Works and the great things we do.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take a break and read a proclamation and perhaps...
Town of Needham, 2025 Public Works Week Proclamation. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Needham, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of Public Works officials, and these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Needham to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities, and an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of Public Works systems and programs such as water, sewer, drains, streets, and highways, traffic control, public buildings, solid waste disposal, recycling, parks and forestry, and snow removal, and whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and Public Works employees are recognized as first responders who contribute to the health, safety, and comfort of this community, which greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works departments is materially influenced by the public's attitude towards and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be it resolved that the Select Board does hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through May 24th as Public Works Week in the Town of Needham, and calls upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the challenges involved in providing Public Works services and to recognize Public Works employees and the everyday contributions they make as first responders towards our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Dated this 13th day of May 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm chairing, Mr. Boyd, vote to approve and sign the 2025 Public Works Week Proclamation.
Second. Thank you, discussion?
Yeah. Well, we're at it. So I went on the tour of the De La Nav facility and for the Cogswell Building redo, and it was a little bit educational to see how much you do for the town and pre-seed the facility, and the remarks and the comments on the other people were really interesting. They were like, wow, we, we have this many trucks, we have these many, this many vehicles, we have a staff of mechanics? I think they thought you guys went to Jiffy Loop, and, but we have, we have a staff that handles this stuff, so you guys are a big department and you make the time line, so thank you very much. It's great.
All right, so there's motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to a public hearing on a grant of location from Eversource. I imagine we're going to be joined by Joanne Callender online. Hi, Joanne.
Good evening.
How are you? Okay, so Joanne, what do you have for us?
I have a location request for 50 Brook Road. We're seeking to install 85 feet of conduit into Brook Road to upgrade the service at that address.
Okay, just because the sound went wonky for a second there, I'm just going to repeat that address, 50 Brook Road. Ms. Town Manager, is everything in order? Okay? Okay, great. Any comments from my colleagues? No? Okay, this is a public hearing, this is for the grant of location at 50 Brook Road. Is there anybody here to speak specifically to the grant of location at 50 Brook Road? Or anybody online?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, if there is no more discussion, I would walk on motion.
That the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 85 feet of conduit in Brook Road.
Second. Okay, discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're all set there, and now moving on to a public hearing, grant of location for 99 Whitman Road. Joanne?
Yes, Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately eight feet of conduit into Whitman Road, and this is to provide service to a pool house at that address.
Excellent. Is everything in order?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion from my colleagues? All right, this is a public hearing. Again, the address is 99 Whitman Road. Is there anyone here to speak specifically to this public hearing? Is there anyone online? Okay, if there's no more discussion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately eight feet of conduit in Whitman Road.
Second. Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. And our last, Joanne, 60 Locust Lane.
Yes, Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install, you know what, I'm sorry, I didn't write down the amount of conduit into Locust Lane for a new home.
Looks like it's eight feet.
Thank you. At 60 Locust Lane. Yes, thank you.
Okay, any discussion?
Madam Chair, this work was done prior to the GOL. I believe the applicant is in the room, is that right, Ma?
Come on up.
Hi.
Hi, you can have a seat at the table.
And if you can just say your name and address. 60 Locust Lane.
Okay, so you're the resident?
Yeah.
Okay. Typically, we are not doing this work prior to receiving the grant of location. So was there some unusual circumstance?
We just did not recognize this part of our land. It's like, it looked like a common area. The guy who dug, he did not see it, so it was misunderstanding.
Okay, so your contractor is not here?
No, I'm, I'm a builder, so.
Oh, so you guys are the workers.
I'm a builder, yeah.
You are the builder. Okay, so then what do we do in this situation?
Well, it sounds like there was a misunderstanding of what was private property and what was public.
Yeah, it was like two feet. There was a two feet difference, but there is no curb, like, there is no...
Typically, the Board, if there's no...
Sure, but regardless of whether it's on private property or not, wouldn't you need a...
The grant of location is to go over to the public right of way. So, so if there's concerns from any butters, the Board may want to take action, otherwise generally the Board asks the builder to make sure they understand the process and the nature of it.
So is this, this is your home, or this is your property? Like, that you're developing?
It's my home, right now, yeah. Right now, it's my home.
It's your, oh, okay, you're living in it while you're...
Definitely, whatever, however you want to see it, yeah.
Is this the first house that you built in Needham?
No.
It's not? And so this policy has been in place for a while, so I think it's important to understand if you are going to continue to build in Needham.
Sure.
That this is an important part.
Totally makes sense. We just didn't realize the difference.
Do you have a plot map?
Yeah, yeah.
So two feet seems like kind of a lot of variance on the plot map.
It's an open land, like, you wouldn't able, I mean, easier if there's no curb outside.
Right. I think the peril for you is that your property, your equipment, the conduit, and what you're putting in are not on your land but on public land. Until you get permission to do that, you could, it's at risk for you. So that's why we do this, so that you have permission to do it, and then it's fine. So it was sort of at your peril to do it without it.
Makes sense. Like, I next time, definitely going to do it. I never had previously a problem with it, so it just, like, I'm...
So in the future...
Honestly, like, honest mistake.
Sure, honest mistake, except that you've built here before, so...
Yeah, but I never had the situation like that.
You've never had this, okay. So in the future, particularly in a case like this where it's open land, you'll need to, you want to just check with the building department first?
Sure.
To make sure that whether there's boundary marks or not, that you're...
Makes sense.
That you know where you are.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll just ask the Town Manager, has the work been restored, well, has the work been performed and restored to town standards?
It will be.
It will be, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do you want to ask if there's anybody else who has any questions? Yeah. Okay, this is a public hearing, this is a public hearing on the grant of location for 60 Locust Lane, so we're accepting comments from the public on this particular matter only right now. Is there anyone in the room who wants to make a comment, or in a butter, in this case, who wants to make a comment? Or anyone online? I don't see anyone online. Okay. All right.
Then, then if that's the case, I would make a motion that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately eight feet of conduit in Locust Lane.
Second.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thanks, Joanne.
All right, our next public hearing, this is a night full of public hearings, is an application for multiple amendments to an all alcohol license for Needham Wine and Spirits LLC, doing business as Needham Wine and Spirits. So if we can have the group come up? Thank you. Have a seat, introduce yourselves. Thank you. Good luck.
The Board has one more question. We're going to have a family, we're also going to have a license for spirits, but we're going to have a record. The manager of record.
Can you bring your microphone closer to you?
Sure, why not?
Thank you, because I can hear that it's not picking you up.
Okay, is that better?
That's great. Can you summarize the shebang here?
Sure. The application before you tonight is for a change of ownership interest and a change of the LLC, one of the LLC managers. It's part of a larger four-store transaction in which the parties are dividing up ownership amongst themselves. Jack Recko, John Recko, is transferring his 50% ownership in the licensee to Linda O'Connell. Linda is replacing John as a LLC manager as well. Mike O'Connell, who is here with me tonight, he's maintaining his 50% interest, he's maintaining his role as an LLC manager and the manager of record here. They've, they've engaged in a collective enterprise here consisting of these four different Now, over the years, they built these, these stores as a company amongst them. Now they're choosing to, you know, go their separate ways and divide them up equally between John and Linda and Mike, as the two different sides here. In order to accomplish, they're doing it via stock and membership interest transfers, no money's changing hands, it's just an even division of the business between the two parties. The town here, both the Board and the members of the community, will see no change in the day-to-day operations of the licensee, like, as I said, is the manager of record, will continue to be, he's going to continue to focus on maintaining quality operations here in a manner in which the Board expects. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you all have, because I think you have a busy night ahead of you.
You do. All right, so who will be the license holder?
So the license holder is the same. We're not transferring the license to some interest in the entity that holds it. Mike, Mike has been here since day one, 14 years ago, and will continue to be there. One of the two members of the LLC is leaving.
Excuse me, we're having a public hearing, I understand that there's a lot of people coming in, but if you could keep your voices down and conversation to nothing, that would be appreciated so we can complete this business. Thank you.
So, membership interest is transferring, but the licensee is staying the same.
Second.
All right, so if I get this straight, Michael, you and Linda are going to be, you will have Armadale in Needham, correct?
Yes.
All right, and John will take Newton and Post Road?
Yes.
Okay. Very good, thank you. A little bit of game twister, reading the documents, okay.
Just trying to negotiate him.
That was complicated.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, the manager of record is not changing?
No, Mike will continue to be the manager of record. He's been there since day one, will be there in the foreseeable future.
I don't think I have any questions. I know, Mike, that you understand how important our liquor license rules are and that we would expect to see the appropriate technology tools used all the time, so thank you for doing that, and we appreciate when that happens all the time.
Thank you.
All right, in that case, a welcome on motion.
It is a public hearing, I don't know if there's anybody else who wishes to...
Yes, this is a public hearing, so if there is anyone who has comments specific to this matter, the amendment to an all alcohol license for Needham Wine and Spirits, now is the time to raise your hand in the room and online. Okay, in that case, now we're ready for motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the application for multiple amendments to a Section 15 package store, all alcohol license submitted by Needham Wine and Spirits LLC, doing business as Needham Wine and Spirits, and if so approved, forward the application to the A, B, C, C for review and final approval.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are bang on time. We now have a public hearing for our Envision Needham Center program, and I want to just say a few things before we get started. First of all, we're going to have a short presentation, and we will have public comment after the presentation. As I said at the beginning of our session tonight, we will take as long as we need to get through the public comment that we have, just because it was noticed for a certain time with something to follow. This is kind of the main event here tonight, so this is where we're at. I want to make sure that everyone understands that the Select Board voted on Monday, May 5th to delay the pilot for at least six months in order to address the concerns already brought up through public feedback and ensure that those concerns are reflected in the concept plan. And that concept, the newest concept plan, again, only a concept, will be presented to you this evening. I also want to make sure that you know that the committee roster is now complete with, or will be complete once we pass our consent agenda this evening, for our final business seats. So the whole Envision team is set, and so just wanted to say thank you to all of those folks who have consented to fill those seats. This evening, we do really want to make sure that we all have a chance to talk... or will be complete, once we pass our consent agenda this evening for our final business seats. So the whole Envision team is set. And so just wanted to say thank you to all of those folks who have consented to fill those seats. This evening, we do really want to make sure that we all have a chance to talk. Everyone gets to say what they want to say. We're gonna, as is typical, we're gonna limit our public comment to three minutes per person so that everyone gets a chance to speak. I will ask you, please, that we would love to have your very specific feedback. Whatever you have to say is fine, but we're also specifically looking for specific feedback. We would like to know not just what you don't want, but also what you do want. So if you can try to include that, that would be really helpful. Please be respectful of your neighbors. Please share the time. If someone has already said the thing that you came here to say, you can certainly stand up and just say, I am going to echo those sentiments from the last speaker. We are taking notes. We're listening. But we want to make sure that everyone has time to talk. Please address all of your comments to me, the chair. Please do not make personal or aggressive comments towards anyone, but in particular the staff or your neighbors. As we've just concluded town meeting, I will share the moderator's reminder that we are all one Needham. We're here because we love our town. We want it to be great. We might have different ways or ideas about how we get there, but we're all here for the same reason. So let's just be kind to each other. Questions that you ask that are easily answered, we will try to answer. Questions that are not so easily answered or are works in progress, we'll collect. And we're gonna try to answer them in an FAQ document that we'll collect throughout the evening. I imagine there are lots of people here to speak, but we have had a couple, or at least one, advance request to speak. And so I'm going to call that person up first. But again, we're doing our presentation first, and then we will start public comment. Okay? So no rush. We'll get through everyone. And now I'll call up the Envision team. So that is Karis Lestig, Director of Public Works, Margot Spiller from APAC, our consultant, along with Cassandra Thompson, also from APAC, Karen Fitzgerald, landscape architect, and the lead tool design. If you guys could just say whose, that would be great. And speak into the microphone, because we have a large group.
Sure. My name's Margot Spiller.
Cassandra Thompson.
And Karen Fitzgerald.
Welcome.
This is the first time that the Envision Needham Center concept is being presented to the select board. There've been, there's a history for the last several years of working on this project, as well as a history that goes well beyond that of wanting to make improvements to the downtown corridor. The presentation that was included in the packet that is available and will be posted on the website has a lot of details about the history of the project, the goals of the project, information that we won't focus on tonight. But for context, if anyone is looking, that's where that information is, all in one centrally located area. Tonight, we'll really be focusing on the most current concept plan that we have for looking at our downtown. And moving forward, now that we have the Envision Needham Center working group at full capacity, we'll be working at establishing a new schedule for implementation and what all the markers will be along the way that will be represented to the board likely in June, looking at what an anticipated implementation would be. And again, all the steps for public feedback, adjustments in the layout, and what we can do to try to address as many concerns as possible in that period of time. So we'll be coming back with a new timeline for implementation, likely in June for consideration. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Margot to present sort of a little bit on the details of what informed this particular design and then what the concept plan is itself.
Thanks, Karis. I'm just gonna make sure I can advance the slides. Perfect. All right. Good evening, chair and members of the board. Really appreciate you having the team here to provide an update on the Envision Needham Center project. As Karis mentioned, we did provide more slides in the packet for today's meeting than we're planning on presenting. So we'll be clicking through those, but wanted to have them be reference information for everyone moving forward. So we are tonight going to focus on the goals of the project and the latest conceptual design, which we developed based on best practices, as well as feedback we've received from stakeholders to date. However, we are happy to answer any questions you might have. Great. So first, just spending a minute reviewing current conditions. Here we show some photos highlighting existing infrastructure within Needham Center. While the center is consistently full of people, it does not necessarily feel people-centric. The narrow sidewalks, expansive pavement, and long crossing distances resulting from poor travel lanes all contribute to a downtown that feels dominated by vehicles. Issues with the existing layout were broadly placed into three categories: safety, resiliency, and placemaking. From a safety perspective, the sidewalks are not compliant with ADA guidelines, so they're not accessible. Also, the long crossing distances make non-motorists exposed to vehicles for a long period of time. And also, the multiple travel lanes in a given direction lead to a multi-threat situation where a pedestrian waiting to cross might have one vehicle yielding for them, but then the vehicle in the next traveling over does not yield. So not the safest condition. Beyond safety issues for non-motorists, the existing infrastructures also represent safety concerns for those in vehicles. We noticed that approximately one-third of crashes occurring within the project limits are side swipes occurring in the same direction of travel, which is inherently due to the multiple lanes of travel in either direction. From a resiliency perspective, many of you experienced the flooding within the project limits in 2023. This is largely due to the outdated closed drainage system within the project limits, as well as the large amount of impervious area, really maximizing the amount of stormwater that does enter that closed drainage system. And finally, from a placemaking perspective, we have heard time and time again that many of the trips to the center are purpose-based. People go to the center to visit one location, and then they leave, versus being destination-based, where people go to the center to walk around and visit multiple locations. Taking a step back to provide some context for the design approach, the portion of Great Plain Avenue within the project limits from Linden Street to Pickering Street is the only segment of Great Plain Ave. within Needham that consistently has two travel lanes in each direction. Outside of the project limits, Great Plain Avenue narrows down to one travel lane in each direction. Similarly, the main roadways that feed into the project limits, including Dedham, Highland, Chapel, and Chestnut, all also only have one travel lane in each direction. So when we're considering options for reallocating the public realm within the center, the notion of reducing the number of travel lanes from four down to two would yield a condition within the center that is similar to the roadways approaching the project limits from every direction. So based on direction from the town and the board, the overarching design mission for the project has been to create a safe, vibrant, and resilient destination for current and future Needham residents, visitors, and businesses. This charge led to three main goals: improving safety and mobility, encouraging sustainability and climate change resilience, and promoting beautification and placemaking. To create a conceptual design that achieves these three goals, our team utilized industry-standard best practices and incorporated stakeholder feedback to identify a layout that makes appropriate trade-offs between the various demands of the existing public right-of-way. Specifically, to improve safety and mobility for all users, we incorporated wider, accessible, and unobstructed sidewalks, shorter crossing distances, and dedicated facilities for those on bikes, as well as measures proven to encourage slower, safer travel speeds at all times of day. Understanding that mobility also extends to vehicles. We also look to retain the majority of on-street parking and work to improve wayfinding, curbside management, and loading operations to maximize the use of space available. Sustainability and resiliency within the center will also be improved by upgrading the existing closed drainage system, as well as reducing the amount of stormwater runoff that enters that system through more street trees and more permeable materials. Finally, beautification and placemaking are supported through enhancing the destination experience of the center, encouraging foot traffic through new community spaces, expanded opportunities to stop and linger, and the beautification created by an expanded tree canopy, other landscape elements, and public art.
Margot, I'm going to stop you for just one second. Yeah, of course. There are lots of seats here in the front row. A couple of front rows. I think the Envision committee was going to be sitting there, but it looks like they didn't get the memo. So come on down and make yourself comfortable. There's also seating up in the balcony. We're going to be here for a while. You might want to get comfortable. Okay.
Perfect. Just going through these. All right. This corridor does present some unique challenges that have impacted the design process. Specifically, the right-of-way within the project limits is inconsistent, which complicates the application of a consistent design approach throughout the corridor. The short length of blocks and close spacing of intersections complicates the signal operations, as well as the intersection configurations that we can consider. The at-grade railroad crossing complicates on-street parking, locations of crosswalks, as well as, again, signal operations. The lack of existing or robust vegetation and trees along the corridor requires the allocation of new expanded space, which has to be reallocated from other uses. And finally, the skewed geometry of the intersection of Great Plain Avenue with Dedham and Highland, and the limited ability to change that configuration outside the limits of the existing pavement really limits the options that we have for reconfiguring that intersection. And with that, I will turn it over to Karen to present our latest conceptual design.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, we are in the concept phase right now. This is a very iterative process. We're working with the town, the stakeholders, the feedback we're getting from the public, as well as our engineering and designers as a team. And we will use this formula throughout the entire process. So this is just the beginning, where we're just trying to lay down the basic concept and what's possible within the right-of-way within the project limits. We have gone through a couple iterations already, and we are now on the refined concept. And I'll go through that with you in a second. But I do want to point out that parking's been studied a little deeper in this concept, and we are able to retain 90 spaces, thereabouts, in this concept plan that we'll be presenting tonight. So I'm going to walk through the plans. They are in three sections. So we're starting from the west end. This is from Linden Street moving east. Here, we are showing a two-lane, one lane in each direction. We are extending the curb to provide both safer crossings, so it's a shorter distance for pedestrians to cross the street, as well as green buffers, which can be used for street trees, as well as other plantings. Also, when you get further down into the design details, they could also, you know, control some of the stormwater issues there. So that would happen much later in the design when we have grading and drainage design. This is the center section, just west of that first area. This is really where the park is and where we're seeing the Dedham skewed intersection to the right. We're able to really gain some wonderful public realm space there. Also, we are retaining parking, shortening all of the crossings in this section. And we're looking at a possible raised area, meaning that the street and the sidewalk levels would be the same. Of course, we would provide buffers for making sure that there's no conflicts there. But that would also signal to drivers that you're entering, you know, a place where there might be a lot of pedestrians and a lot of activity there, and really slow down the traffic in this section. And then the western side, we are also proposing an additional mid-block crossing here that we see, and we have talked to other folks, that there's a lot of people crossing there just through the traffic. So we're providing a safe crossing there that has buffers on either side, better visibility from the driver perspective to see pedestrians who are waiting to cross, and then also retaining quite a bit of the parking on this end. These plans are also, we have printed plans in the back of the room for anyone who has questions. We've provided a few renderings of what that might look like. And this is looking at the Dedham-Hailand-Great Plain Avenue intersection. By removing what we call the slip lane from Dedham, we really gain a lot of great public realm space on the right side, as well as the left. And it'll provide both seating for outdoor dining, as well as public seating for anyone who would like to just come and sit in that area. You can also see what Margot was pointing out with the green space being between the curb and the bike lane. That provides a space for street trees to be a little bit outside of the sidewalk area, still providing shade, but giving more space to the sidewalk area. I think if you walk down those sidewalks now, the trees are really encumbering that clear space to pass through. So the width of those sidewalks would be wider and clearer of obstructions. This is a view looking west, towards Highland Avenue. And this is sort of the, you can see the mid-block crossing we're showing there, just behind the van, and how that the tree spacing would help to widen out those sidewalks in this area. This is a similar view, looking east, towards Glendale Road. Again, separating the pedestrian areas from the cyclists and rolling scooters, et cetera, but also providing the curb extensions and short crossings at all of these intersections. This view is looking east at the Great Plain Ave. and Maple intersection, just to give you an example of separation of modes, as well as those bump-out areas and how, you know, the vehicles will have a much clearer view of people trying to cross those streets. And this final view is the Dedham Avenue corner, eastern corner, where you could have outdoor dining for the restaurants there, but also public dining seating areas as well. And just quickly, the demonstration project, the demonstration project will be based on the approved concept plan. So when we have an approved concept plan, that we will, you know, figure out. But just to give folks an idea of what we're talking about, the idea behind the demonstration project is to give people the feeling of what the final concept plan will feel like, the space that will be gained, and the safety measures, and the traffic situation with the final build-out. So that will be either by barriers, actual concrete barriers to protect people, also using flex posts, which are those plastic posts, to delineate buffer zones and bike lanes. But also, we will be using placemaking elements, seating tables, some decorative paint to delineate urban public realm areas, along with some extra planting, some beautifications. And these are examples of other similar demonstration projects. We've also gone through and really surveyed the different retail establishments and where the outdoor dining or outdoor activities might make sense, so that will be part of the demonstration project as we go through that process.
So just wanted to build on that just before, just in the back. But I think there's been a lot of conversation specifically about bike lanes, and just wanted to speak to that issue specifically. We do have a grant for implementation of a pilot that does include bike lanes as a requirement of that grant. That doesn't mean we have to move forward with that grant, but that is a condition of that specific funding source. Sort of two comments. One is, generally speaking, when we look at the downtown, I do think, you know, there's a response to bike lanes versus pedestrian areas from a right-of-way perspective. They are sort of looked at the same. So where you end up putting your curb line is really important. What you do within that curb, parking road for the roadway or bike lane, pedestrian, outdoor dining, what have you for the sidewalk matters less when it comes to kind of long-term viability. Once you start laying in your curb line and you put your drainage structures in, that's when you're sort of frozen, and everything within that area becomes either, you know, people space or becomes vehicle space, and it's really hard to change once you have that flexed. So I know there's a varying opinions about bike lanes sort of more broadly. But again, I would challenge, when we look at it, just what do we want to allocate our space for? And then think about what fits within those areas. And then just secondly, right now, we don't have a dedicated funding source for the implementation of a construction project. We do know that a portion of it would likely come from Chapter 90, and we know that a portion of it will be a request that will come from DPW to town meeting. But the balance of the project, we don't have a dedicated and identified funding source. Right now, all funding sources that are channeled through the state will require us to install bike lanes that are separated from the right-of-way, whether it's by stanchion, whether it's by curb, or whether it's raised as part of the state's requirements. They do not currently enforce that on any of our projects, but they do enforce that on all projects that they fund outside of Chapter 90. Again, that could change. We are several years out from when we would be doing a full design, a full design and build. So they may require that in the future. I don't know. But it certainly changes the burden of funding if that were the choice that we made, that we may not have access to certain funding sources that we would if we were to include bike lanes. Again, it's not saying we have to do it or we do have to do it, but those are the trade-offs of having that included.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to get into the public comment portion of this evening. So I just want to remind everyone, we're going to do a three-minute limit per person. When you come up to the microphone, which is right there behind this big TV screen, and we'll be sort of swapping from the room to our online audience, we'll ask you to state your name and your address before you make your comment. It would be really nice if everyone could just, you know, remember that we're all neighbors and be nice to each other. Even as you make your comment, we would like very much to have some very specific feedback if you have something like that, something that you want to see. We know that parking is an issue, but feel free to mention that as you will. So we're gonna...
Do we get to ask any questions first? Because this is also our first time seeing it.
It is true. It is our first time seeing it.
Are we supposed to wait till afterwards? Or what is the...
I guess, I feel like we've told people to come, and I'd love to get them started. But if you had something specific that you wanted to say, we could...
Oh, I've got several, but that's okay. I'm happy to wait for other people.
Okay, so as Marion mentioned, this is the first presentation, so this body of any of these plans. This is still a concept plan. It's still a project in development. So, you know, we're working towards a solution that will work for everyone. There's nothing set in stone here. Obviously, the plan has changed since last week. So... Since yesterday. So we'll get started with public comments. Brazer Ham, Formalime, and come on down. Just remember, please, name, address. And we are going to be timing. So I'll also ask, this room, it feels very big, and you feel like you're whispering, but we can hear... It makes it, we can't hear what you're saying, but it does make it impossible to hear what anyone else is saying. So we can try to keep the background noise to a minimum. Before we get started at the microphone, we did have one advance request for comment, and so I'm going to call that person up first. And that is Eileen Baker. Eileen, are you here with us? Oh, there she is. Okay, so come on up. Vipul, if you don't mind. Everyone take one step back at the microphone. We're going to let Eileen go first because she asked in advance, and then we'll get through everyone else.
I thought everybody would be asking, so sorry about that. Good evening. I am Eileen Baker, the owner of Proud Mary at 1024 Great Plain Avenue. I would like to thank the Select Board members for putting a pause on the Envision Needham Center project and agreeing that more resident and business input and concerns need to be heard and addressed before further implementation is taken. While I have been clear about my concerns with the project, to me, this is about more than just losing my business. I opened Proud Mary over six years ago during a turbulent time in my life. My mother, Mary, had been diagnosed with end-stage kidney disease. She and I would often seek out little shops like Proud Mary whenever we were vacationing or shopping locally. I opened the store for my mom, and although she has never been able to see the store in person, I know she was proud of me, hence the name Proud Mary. I chose Needham after looking at many other towns because of its charming downtown feel, growing popularity, and the proximity to where I live. The timing coincided with the beloved store Taylor's closing. A dear friend, who as family in Needham, said to me, "Needham really needs you." Little did I know that I need a Needham as well. I have built true friendships amongst customers. We've had conversations about good and not such good things happening in each other's lives. I've seen them by gifts for celebrations and for sad occasions. I have watched their children grow up. I have customers who fiercely support small businesses. One customer has brought hundreds of friendship bracelets and passes them around to the people of Needham and beyond. One special customer, a woman who happened to be named Mary, would come in weekly to tell me all about her life, from being born in Ireland to raising her beautiful family in Needham. I learned so much from her. I am grateful that I had the privilege to attend her wake and say goodbye to her. This is how close and connected I am to this community. My employees are my sisters. We celebrate one another. We give each other advice. We laugh together. They are my support system. They are my rocks. I love them with all of my heart. I have the utmost respect and admiration for my fellow Needham businesses. We are here for one another and strive to make Needham Center a welcoming community. While it is not an easy job and things often go wrong, I can say with 100% certainty that I love what I do every single day. Small businesses are the heart of Needham's Town Center. We drive the local economy, provide jobs, and give our community its unique character. In this current economic climate of uncertainty, we need your full support, not added obstacles. The proposed project, while aiming to improve things, could significantly disrupt businesses. Reducing road capacity, increasing congestion, and limiting parking will discourage customers from coming to Needham Center. While we agree there are improvements that need to be made, it should not be to the detriment of our livelihoods. We have spoken to businesses in West Roxbury, Cambridge, Somerville, Belmont, and Beverly, where road diets have been implemented. They have had substantial revenue losses, and some have even closed. I want the chance to continue to grow my business, not just focus on saving it. I want the chance to meet more Marys to learn from. I've built it from scratch, and I'm incredibly proud of it. Now more than ever, you must prioritize economic stability and protect the lifeblood of your local economy. And that is us, the small businesses of Needham. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Vipul?
Thanks very much. Vipul Bushan, 1654 Great Plain. Madam Chair, members of the Select Board and fellow residents, I really appreciate the innovation and vision of trying to beautify our town. And it's nice to see our town doing things to make it more enjoyable to hang out in town. When I was looking at this plan, I have three concerns or reservations, which I really would like to see you address in the course of the coming months. One of them is, we live out further from Needham Center. So we live near Oldham College. So for us to enjoy these things, we would have to travel into town. It's not really safe for us to bike, and it's too far for most of us to walk most of the time. And so I think it would be great to think about, is could we have more parking somehow? Could we have resident-only parking? Or some solution like that so that people who don't live within a quarter mile of Needham Center could also enjoy the benefits of this kind of development? Number two, a lot of our lives are spent going from one place to another. I have two children in school, so a lot of time I'm shuttling them from place to place. So we have to go through Needham Center to get to Pollard Middle School. We have to go through Needham Center to get to the high school. We have to go through Needham Center to get to the Hershey Train Station or to the YMCA. And so I'm concerned about any solution that would slow the traffic. And so I would strongly encourage, if we could try as part of the pilot, can we put some of those cones or traffic barriers to simulate what it would look like to have one lane? And do that for a couple of weeks. And please do it when school is in session and YMCA programming is underway and that kind of thing. So that... And I would love to be proven wrong. If it turns out the traffic still flows, then I will be happy. But if it doesn't, then let's learn about it before it's too late. And, you know, my last one is, all of this costs money. And I just heard the woman from the public office, from the planning, I forget your...
Public Works Director.
Public Works Director, right. And, you know, there will be some component of that which will come from our house taxes. And I shudder every time that comes. And, you know, I'm not saying that I would be really opposed to it, but we should be cognizant that we have a new middle school to build. We have other things to do, and everything costs money, and there's only so much we have to spend. So thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board.
Thank you.
Is it a Q and A?
Not really.
Oh, just comments?
It's public comment. But if you can start with your name and your address.
I will. I'm Kilpatrick Carroll. I live at 101 Fair Oaks Park.
Sorry.
Kilpatrick Carroll.
Thank you.
101 Fair Oaks Park.
Thank you.
So first, I love the iterations and getting feedback from the community, so kudos to the team for pulling that together. It's a detailed and thoughtful plan. I actually really love it. I'm a cyclist. I spend a lot of time on my bike. I have three young kids, and I often ride to town to partake in the businesses, ice cream, going to cook, or whatever other... There are lots of places that we eat and patronize. And not being able to ride our bikes to town in a safe way or riding them on the sidewalk where we have to push old ladies out of the way is not a comfortable feeling, and I don't love doing that. But also, if the alternative is riding in the street, and I don't love doing that either. So I love the idea that the bike lanes offer some safe way for me to get to town without having to push our way through with the bikes. So that is really fantastic. I think that the space is also beautiful. It provides a place where people would want to stay longer. I love that there's a spot for you to dine or to just kind of hang out. And I think what you did with the Dedham Avenue connection is really nice. So I think that was really, kudos to you on that. I did have two questions, but if you're not going to answer them, that's fine. I'll just leave them with you. It seems like we're losing 13 parking spots, roughly 10%. That doesn't seem like the end of the world to me. So I just, if that number's right, I think that's helpful to sort of understand. And I didn't really get a sense from the presentation about the impact on traffic and how with like longer wait times. I do notice as I take my kids to sports over the weekends, there's sometimes traffic to get into the town. And what would that, how would the impact be of a single lane on that? Because I know it's a single lane coming into the town and a single lane going out of the town. So is it going to make that big a difference? I just don't get a sense of that either way. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I think that's going to be a question that a lot of people have. So if you feel comfortable talking about the merge and the traffic signals, maybe we could just do a little bit on that so that everyone has that information.
Yeah, so one of the things we have looked at as part of this is we did look at a traffic diversion analysis. So that was looking at the peak time, 8:00 and 5:00, and where you may see traffic disperse around the town and what impact that might have on other local roads. What we haven't done, and what I think we anticipate doing in the next six months, if not a little longer, is really doing a comprehensive traffic analysis. We had an analysis done when we did the downtown project to begin with. That project was largely precipitated by dysfunctional traffic signals in the first place. So the goal was at that time to try to process traffic faster through the downtown. And again, when we say process traffic faster, we mean get a person from point A to point B faster, not drive at a faster speed, right? Those are sort of two different things. You can do start-stop and drive quick in between, or you can drive slowly and get through the same quarter at the same time. So we are going to do more analysis prior to the implementation of a pilot looking at the current traffic processing time and what the processing time would look like moving forward. I think right now, and I'm speaking completely off the cuff, I believe it's a little over four minutes average processing time to get through our downtown currently. My guess is it will be some level of increase to get through the downtown, but I don't think it's going to be like double the... You know, I think that's the concern is that if you remove a lane of traffic, it will double the amount of time it gets through the downtown. That is not what we believe will happen, and we'll have more modeling that we'll be able to present as we get further into the project. Because I know that that is a concern that has been addressed.
Sure. And then just to piggyback on that, because I'm anticipating a couple of other things. People have said that if traffic in the downtown changes, it could push traffic into side streets. So will the traffic study that you're talking about address some of those concerns as well?
Yeah, we've looked at, that has happened already. We've looked at what the impact would be to side streets. I think largely we talked, and I have the data. It was at one of the presentations, and we didn't include it here to try to expedite feedback on this concept plan, but it wasn't significant. I guess what I would say is, and this has been my question when I've talked to residents about this, being somebody who's from the town and worked in the town for a very long time, I believe people are already, who know how to get around our downtown without bisecting the downtown, are already doing that. So I don't think that because of a whole host of considerations, the train being one of them, that people do avoid driving through the downtown if they know ways currently to avoid that, if they're not going to a destination point specifically in the downtown. So for example, from my building to the RTS, right? We're not going down Great Plain Ave and then going down Central. We're going down a different street. So I think that also will have to be part of the calculation of what that current, the people who are currently avoiding pre-existing concerns in the downtown. And again, I think the train may have more to do with that than anything with our signalization. And that's one of the challenges we have in the downtown, for sure.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next up.
Hi. My name...
Are you ready? Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. My name is Jamie Strangio. I'm one of the owners at Secondhand Rose. My concern is, businesses right now have been struggling for a few years since COVID, number one. Number two, I've noticed all the beautiful improvements they've made to the center of town, which is wonderful. I don't see it being utilized to its fullest at all. I have children who live in Needham down the street. They're constantly driving through. They're constantly dropping, bringing, doing. I know if our store loses parking spaces, which a lot of our customers are complaining about, they have to carry clothing and do what happens to be our business. Now, if UPS next to us doesn't have parking in front, they will be out of business. If they're out of business, we're out of business. I think biking, I'm a biker, but I do not see the large amount of bikers I think biking, I'm a biker, but I do not see the large amount of bikers that would, you know, be sacrificing these businesses. And maybe I don't understand how many spots we're losing, but if you're having bike lanes on either side going all ways, it would seem all the parking. So if you tell us where these people are going to park, to go talk and congregate on the sidewalks where you're building all this beautiful greenery, I don't know how they're going to get there and where they're going to park. So if you want all these businesses in Needham to be out of business and possibly open up the buildings to have condos and businesses for more taxes, whatever the real driving factor is, it's going to put everyone, all these small businesses, right out of business. And we struggle now when we struggle with parking. So unless 15 parking spaces, I heard, I don't understand, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm still not seeing any lines. Yell out if I miss it. Lois?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Lois Sockle. I live at 1611 Greendale Avenue, and I've come to talk in opposition to this plan. So I'd like to mention just a few things if I might, okay? Yeah, I used to bike. But is there anyone in this room that wants to put a 92-year-old woman on a bike to get from her house to downtown? This town, which I love, I've lived here for 58 years. I love this town. I truly do. But this town has no bus that could take me from my home in town. Doesn't have it. It has no metro system where bike lanes make sense because you got a metro system where I could go to a station and then go into town. And I'm one of these people that love to go into town. I go into town just about every day, and I walk around town. I love town. We don't have as a community the facilities to replace your individual car to get into town. Now, over the 58 years I've lived here, I have noticed something about cars. We have more of them. The population hasn't expanded as much as the cars. We have more cars, more growth in cars than we have in people. I come into one of the establishments in town very frequently called Bagel's Best to get my nutrition in the morning. Twice this week, I couldn't park. There is not enough parking in town. I envision... Thank you. You all went for bagels. I envisioned this town building a three-story parking garage. Then I can talk about it. But until you do that, until you give us the facility for more parking, or build us a metro, what you're doing is you're saying to people like me, and there's a lot of people like me, no, they're not 92 yet, but they're getting up there, who can't get on a bike to come into town, period. There are many, many places in this town where you can bike. I love biking. I used to love it. And this town is filled with places where you can bike and bike safely. But you don't need it to replace that car so I can get into town and shop. You're forcing me to go to Newton, and I don't like that.
Hi, sir. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Elliot Steinberg. I live at 29 Shady Lane in Needham. I've been a Needham resident for 40 years, and I'm a civil engineer by training. And I wanted to pick up on the traffic theme, which until a few minutes ago, there was really no mention for traffic study. I know right now that traffic has improved since that recent project a few years ago and the fixing of the lights. But even now, back up, the plan is eliminating turn lanes. And you've mentioned that you've got a number of one-lane streets all discharging into Great Plain Ave. Those cars have to go somewhere. It can't take a one car into another one lane. And with the turn lanes now, like the one in front of Bagel's Best, that turn lane backs up, fills the entire turn lane, and then right down Chapel Street. The turn lane on Great Plain Ave taking a left on towards the hospital, that has helped a lot, but it still backs up. And there's been times where often there's gridlock because of all the traffic converging. So that you need to have a for-real traffic study with traffic counts to figure where these cars are going to go, what's the wait time? And, you know, eliminating these turn lanes is going to make the gridlock worse. And you have to also think about the future MBTA community's development. There's going to be more residences. Where are those cars going to go? So I just think there's got to be a balance. The improvements are beautiful, but there has to be a balance between accessibility and traffic and bike lanes and the land. You can't make a priority the bike lanes at the expense of gridlock in the town.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Rushke. I live at 21 Rosemary Street. I'm excited about the changes being discussed for our downtown. I want to tell you why. Five years ago, we faced a public health crisis that also seriously threatened the livelihood of our beloved town businesses. One creative measure that we adopted out of necessity was to allow businesses, restaurants, to repurpose parking spaces into welcoming outdoor dining areas. As life returned to normal, we came to a surprising conclusion. Although we still like our cars and we still like our parking, we found that we loved these new public people spaces even more. Today, you'll find that once barren parking spaces at Masala Art, Farmhouse, Hearth, The James, Sweet Basil, and French Press have instead become lively, people-centered spaces. By my count, about 20 parking spaces have already been repurposed, and I don't know anyone who would want to go back. In 2025, our businesses face fresh challenges and economic uncertainties. Now is the time to act. Right now, our downtown is built more for cars passing through than for people spending time. The configuration of Great Plain Avenue attempts to move cars quickly through town, and that's exactly the problem. When people move through quickly, they don't stop, they don't linger. It encourages people to drive through Needham, not stop in Needham. So let's change that. Let's invest in a downtown that invites people to explore and to stay. A vibrant pedestrian-friendly streetscape will make Needham more attractive, more competitive, and more resilient. When people feel safe and comfortable walking, they linger, and when they linger, they support our local businesses. I know the road ahead for this project is long, hopefully not too wide, and there are legitimate questions that we need to solve regarding delivery access and customer parking. These are solvable. Let's work together to build a downtown that puts people first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Bullion. I live at 86 Peace Steel Road. I've lived in Needham for almost 30 years and love this town. I'm not usually the vocal one in my family, and public speaking is not a comfortable space for me, but this project and the direction it's taken without proper input for the real stakeholders in this town has been very concerning to me. I followed the rules, providing feedback properly as requested by Envision Needham, but it seems to have been overlooked. I was one of the 154 folks that took the survey, less than half a percent of our population. I attended the MPCC meeting virtually and logged into an app where I provided feedback real time and met with a member of the Select Board to discuss my concerns. But it seems like my direct anecdotal information was not considered, so here goes. For years, I've walked to Needham Center from my house four to five times a week, at different times of the day, on both weekdays and weekends. A biker passes me maybe once a month. It's so infrequent that in no way does it warrant narrowing our streets with a bike lane to accommodate such a tiny segment of the population. Some of the feedback from the less than 1% states that if our downtown was nicer, bikers and walkers would spend more time and money there. I disagree. Although some of our sidewalks are in disrepair and aren't super wide, they've never been a deterrent for me shopping downtown. The folks that live here that are waiting for change to take advantage of our great downtown stores are missing out now and will probably never take advantage of them. Another premise of the group is that we have cars speeding through downtown. That just doesn't happen. There are too many lights for our cars to drive remotely fast in our town center. Another issue is how the group really digs in about the plethora of parking we have here in Needham and actually claim that maybe the residents don't know how to read the signs correctly, and if they did, they'd know that more parking existed. This is entirely incorrect. If you want to park in Needham at night, on the weekend, or during the summer, there's no problem. But during the week, during business hours, it's often much of a challenge. The CVS lot is often full, metered parking is often full. People always want to compare us to Wellesley Center or Newton Center. They both have ample parking, automated meters, and most importantly, some three-hour spots. Needham doesn't have that. If you want people to lunch downtown and then do errands, that needs to be accounted for, and we currently don't have that option. Envision Needham is a brilliant name. It evokes a vision of flowers, trees, benches, and vitality. And it seems like some of that is going to be accomplished. But to be clear, it is not my vision to hurt our businesses, and it's not my vision to build bike lanes to cater to a very small segment of the population. It's not my vision to narrow our streets so that folks from neighboring towns won't want to visit us. It's not my vision for adjacent neighborhoods to bear the brunt of overflow traffic that will exist with the road diet. And it's not my vision to ignore the banners that are hanging downtown that say "Dine Local, Shop Local" that you can see from Town Hall. Please don't make changes just for changes' sake, and please take to heart what works for all of us. Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Thank you, Janet.
Lou Wolfson, 29 Sumino Road. I'd like to just call an end to this whole project this evening. I don't see anything positive about it. You talk about a plan that is years out. You talk about plans. You look at a plan, most people don't even understand how to read a plan. You show trees. Here's our common, we have the trees that you show already. You know, the town has better things to do with their money.
Okay, listen, let's please be civil, and if we stop and applaud at every line, we're going to be here all night. So let's let Louis make his comments, and then we'll keep going. We're listening.
Where the businesses didn't know, a lot of the young stakeholders in this town still don't know. They're out with their kids at the ball field, they're busy with them at lessons. They're going to be shocked if this other thing ever got into play. I don't know how many of you have been to West Roxbury, or if you've been to West Roxbury to see it and practice. Have you?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I was there the other day at the request of a biker passing through Needham, and I could not believe my eyes, okay? There was trucks parked in the middle of the road by right, okay? And a CVS truck going around it. It's a danger. I spoke to Jim Harrigan, who used to live here in town. I believe he may have sent you, gentlemen, the board a letter. He says it's a nightmare to the businesses, but that's how it's been pointed out. We spent millions of dollars creating, as this gentleman said, the beautiful four-way intersections. They work, and they work well. Any community that implements a road diet leaves proper turning and traffic flows. This plan proposes to do away with them. You talk about things that we can do. What we can do is work on our sidewalks. The original plan that you guys came up with showed that we had 10 feet on each side of the road. Plans I've seen come back, one says 6 feet, one says 8 feet, one says 12 feet. And, okay, I don't know which way it's going. However, if we had two at 10.6 on each side, that would go a long way. That would allow you to have seating on the sidewalks. You only need, I think, nine feet for a two-table, or about 10.6 for a four-table. We should be embarrassed. We have two crosswalks, okay, that have been sitting there, are pickering and camellus that are unimproved. And you're talking years out to correct this, and you talk about safety? I mean, that's just ridiculous. So I hope the board will please listen, stop this immediately, spend their money wisely.
Hi, I'm Jackie Kylie. I live at 75 Ware Road. We've lived here for about 27 years. We do, we walk to town all the time. When my kids were younger, my husband and I, we walk all over the place. We are pretty lucky that we can walk to town. Not everyone who lives in Needham can easily access it. So I do worry for the people who live further out and how they'll get to town to kind of use the bike lanes or the walkways without the parking. My kids are big now, but when they were little, I would drive around looking for a parking spot in front of Dunkin' Donuts and drive and drive and drive in the bad weather. I do worry about losing, maybe only 15, but I currently feel like in kind of high-peak times, it's hard to find a spot. I'm not pushing a stroller anymore, carrying a baby, carrying a bucket. I can walk a little further to park further away. We also, the pictures are beautiful, but they show beautiful weather. And unfortunately, we don't always have beautiful weather. So for about three weeks this winter, for, we lost about two and a half spots in front of Dunkin' Donuts due to, for snow removal. I don't know if it's just our budget or Needham's, it's not our, what we consider important, but snow removal has never been a strength in the 27 years I've lived here. When I drive to Wellesley or Dover, it's like I'm driving into a different country. And although they look very pretty...
Folks, when you clap in the middle of somebody's comments, you are disrespecting their time to speak, and I can't hear what she's saying. So can we just save the applause and listen to the comments, please? Thank you.
And some of the diagrams, although they look beautiful, the way you're going to park, I don't even know how the plows would remove the snow to keep the few parking spots that you've left. So I do get very worried about that. I don't feel, although we keep being told there's ample parking, but it's when you, I am out of the little kid stage, but, and I can walk further. But if you're older and you're carrying a lot of packages, you're not going to want to walk through areas, and if you have a bunch of little kids with you, you're not going to want to do that. I also get worried, I know the grant gives the town a huge amount of money to improve our sidewalks, our lights. I guess I don't know, is, does the state force us to put the bike lane in the center of town? Could we put the bike lanes in other parts of the town to access the grant money?
I think that's something we would have to look into, but it's a good question.
Mm-hmm. I feel like I had one more question now, but I've lost my thought. So anyway, I do love this space. I thought when you guys, when the town redid the Town Hall, I loved that it allows for seating and for outdoor dining and just to kind of enjoy our town center. I don't feel like people don't have enough space where they can't enjoy it so that to add more, I'm not sure to lose the parking. And the other part about the snow, because I hate snow, is to narrow the roads, and then when the winter comes and the roads are going to be narrower because of snow, it's going to make it more difficult. And one of the biggest hindrances for me walking all winter long is that our current sidewalks aren't always cleared, and only one side of the street is designated by the town to clear. So I would love for our funds to be used for us to be able to access sidewalks and walk to town. I love biking, but I always took our kids, we went to the Minuteman Bike Trail in Arlington where you're safe, away from traffic. And if we could convince Dover to add the bike trail, that would be fabulous.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Doug McCarthy, 81 May Street, 50-year resident of Needham. I want to draw an analogy to what I've observed in Newton. I've commuted to and moved within the city of Newton for the last 30 years. And I can tell you that Newton aggressively... And I can tell you that Newton aggressively, went after grant funding for, to expand bike lanes within the city. They've done it to a fault. I rarely see bikes being used in Newton. Of course, there are times they are, but rarely do I see them in my commutes or my moving around the city during the day. What I have seen is widened bike lanes, taking away travel lanes. And in some cases, where there were four lanes, they are now down to two lanes because of the width of the bike lanes. That does a couple of things. First of all, it keeps people at the lights backed up further. And instead of getting through a light in maybe one cycle, they get through in two to three cycles. It also takes away right on red because that lane is not there anymore, and people have to sit in the lane that's going straight before they can take their turn on red. I think additionally, honestly, bikes are not going to enhance downtown business in Needham. It's cars, it's vehicular traffic, and it's parking. That's what's going to help the downtown business area. And taking away any on-street parking is certainly not going to enhance downtown business. I hope you're listening to the business community because virtually every storefront that I see has a "not my vision" sign in it right now. And people are certainly concerned about that. If businesses can't thrive in downtown Needham, then this entire project is moot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Tanner. I live at 1186 Great Plain Ave. Pretty much downtown. I've lived here since 1976, so I think I have a good handle on the traffic situation on Great Plain. And in the morning, it's difficult for me to get out of my driveway. Maybe if I'm heading west, it's a little easier. There's a lot of, mentioning a lot of landscape trucks. I don't know how deliveries are even going to be made in Needham Center with this new plan. It just seems like it's going to make traffic worse. And for me, that's just a personal concern. Also, I had one other comment that if you, I think you said you were going to be doing some kind of a mock trial of this with movable barriers or whatever, just to see what happens. I'm assuming that there's going to be some kind of counting done of the amount of cars. And I hope that you also count the bikes that you, because I do agree that, I rarely see bikes, and I live right on Great Plain, and I'm in the center all the time. I walk, obviously, I'm lucky. But I agree with what everybody else said about parking. I think it's a priority.
Thanks. Thank you. No, still nobody online, Miles, yeah?
Hi, my name is Krista McFadden. I have been a 13-year resident of Needham. I am the studio manager of Bar Three Needham, right there. I am at the studio 10, 12 hours a day, weekends, mornings, evenings, 5:45 a.m. I live at 46 Laurel Drive, just off of Warren Street. I have two teenagers. We grew up here. We were one-car family for four years here, specifically because we wanted to live near a walkable town center. And we did, and we do. We wanted to be near a train. We're one block away from the commuter rail. It is absolutely fabulous. And until my kids needed to be driven around to their lessons, we were a one-car family, and I walked everywhere, strollers, scooters, to the town center. My experience with Needham Center, even before the traffic lanes were done, was that I could take my kids anywhere at any time. We were walkable, okay? My teenagers know that when they arrive at the sound center, they get off their bike, they walk, they park the bike, they lock it up, just like you do with your car. My kids bike all over town. My youngest is a mountain biker. There's a bike rack on the back of my car. I worry more that if we increase the traffic in the center of town, you make the other streets less safe. There are speed indicators on Warren Street now because people can't slow down, okay? And that's going to become a cut-through for people avoiding Chestnut Street to come into center if you increase the traffic at all. Webster has speed humps. That's one lane each side, and you still had a car drive around another car and kill two girls, okay? Lexington, the town I grew up in, just did a traffic study. Major calming measures, bump outs at the crosswalks. You might ask them why they kept two lanes in each direction, okay? That's an important fact, because right now, we're being told in a lot of design meetings, that in order to calm the traffic, in order to make crossings safer, we need to go down to a one lane. And I challenge you to really understand and look at the needs of the entire town and the entire traffic, how you get here by bike, how you get here by car, and all the users, to ask if everyone's best interests are being kept in mind. I will tell you anecdotally, just this week, we have classes throughout the day, Bar Three. Our 9:45 a.m. classes, this week alone, I have had at least five clients a day come in and say, "I am so sorry I'm late. I couldn't find parking." And that's not street parking. That's parking anywhere. They know all the different lots here. The wayfinding is not an issue. We have clients all the time at 12:15. They cannot find parking. We are a regional business, okay? Many of our clients come from Needham, many do not. Needham, Newton, Weston, Ashland, Framingham. We draw from all over. If you make the town harder to drive to and harder to park to in any way, you will drive our business down. And I will tell you, we will not be able to survive that.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you.
Hi. My name is William Tate Show. I live at 208 Elmwood Road, and I bike. There are many young people moving into Needham, and studies show that young people like to bike. So I envision a vision, and I think we should think about what happens in the future instead of what happened in the past. I don't bike in Needham Centers, I don't want to get hurt. The street is too fast, and I don't want to hit an old lady on the sidewalk. I support these businesses, and I would do more if I could bike. If we make the town more beautiful, people would want to come to town, which means these businesses would get more customers.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Sprogel. I live at 76 Wilshire Park. I do have an opening question, if I might. So I saw reference to 103 parking spaces going down to 90. Are those strictly on the street, or does that include the entire center?
That's just along the street. And again, it's just a concept.
Right. So that means that there are still, so it's really far less than 10% of the parking spots that would be eliminated in this plan?
Yeah.
Far less, because there are parking lots behind CVS, et cetera. So I would just like to challenge the assumption that businesses are going to be hurt by changes in making the town more beautiful, more walkable, more green, and going to one lane of traffic. And what I would offer is for people who are concerned about their businesses, drive through Wellesley, which is a thriving center, where cars go slowly because it's only one lane in both directions. And it's a thriving business community. And I would suggest it's because people are going more slowly. They feel welcome to stop, they feel welcome to linger. They're not afraid, "Oh, if I slow down my car to try to get that parking spot, people are going to be honking behind me." No. It's actually an inviting community, in my opinion, because there is only one line of traffic going in each direction. So I haven't examined all the details of the plan, but I'm speaking in support of the spirit of the plan, of having more trees, more green space, more outdoor area where people can sit and dine and make it a very welcoming community. Yes, it's already welcoming in some ways. But I know I don't ride my bike in Needham Center because, as this young fellow says, it's too scary. If there were bike lanes, and I understand that's not necessarily part of the plan, if there were bike lanes, I might actually get on my bike for the first time in five years because I haven't dared to ride my bike in Needham for five years. So thank you for all your work on this, and thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Kate, I'm just going to run my end, everyone, to keep the background noise to a minimum. It comes up here more, I think, than it sounds like it is out there. When you're talking, we can't hear what the commenter is saying, okay? Go ahead.
Hi, Sam Roboff from 182 Mark Tree Road. I'd like to begin my comments by saying that I ride along Great Plain Avenue twice every day to the commuter rail station and back, all year round, almost about a day about it. I don't go a day almost without riding, especially if I'm going to work downtown. I wanted to add that overall, I really approve of the direction of the plan. I think making the city more walkable will make it a much more vibrant place. When I do come into Needham Center, I have my small children, a two-year-old and a five-year-old. It's hard to kind of park and walk around and go to business, to business, to business, because it's really scary crossing the roads, those little guys. The wide road, getting across it is really hard. The timing you have to cross it is very, very short. And you have two children who don't pay the closest attention to when the lights are changing or not. And you have to run across them, it's kind of hard, and the drivers are impatient. They want to go to, when I drive through here, it's also, you know, it's a problem that light changes as well. So I think really, you know, making the crossings narrower and faster is going to be, make it a much easier place for a lot of people to come, park, and go to see various businesses. I have some sort of specific constructive criticisms on the proposal as well. So I ride, and I noticed that a lot of the bike lanes seem to be deeply segregated from the traffic in the plans as currently designed with planters, dividers along the way. I think this is probably not necessary for Needham and actually having like the bike lanes just on the side of the road, between the lane of traffic and the parking can take up less space and probably more practical for cyclists as well. If I look at these renderings, it's very hard to see how a cyclist makes a left turn to the Great Plain to Highland because you're separated from the traffic, and the merging all the way left is going to be quite hard to do. It doesn't seem to me possible to expect cyclists to get off and walk and then continue along their way. Also, without the deep segregation of the bike lanes, the bike lanes can also be used partially spaced for loading as well. This happens a lot in downtown Boston. So that can alleviate some of the concerns we have. I also think, you know, switching to having the bike lanes be on the road will save enough space. So I think we hopefully be able to not have so many parking spaces reduced. It seems to be a huge concern that most people around the town. I think if the number of parking spaces could be maintained, I think that would, I think alleviate a lot of concern people have about the plans. And it should be possible just to have an extra sidewalk and an extra narrow bike lane and not lose any parking space at all if we aren't putting too much space into sort of like dividers and barriers that sort of make traffic slow down. I think another comment from, maybe think about as well, from a woman earlier talking about the snow. I think if the bike lanes are on the sidewalk, they're probably not going to get plowed as regularly as the, as the roads are being, so that could make actually cycling much harder in the winter months and possibly also force cyclists then back onto the road, which, you know, makes the whole point of the project redundant. So thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you.
Hi. Hello. Thank you, Select Board, for having this public hearing. I'm Jackie, I live at 242 Denham Avenue. I am a member of the committee and here tonight to speak as a resident to share some additional thoughts. I'm at first, I'm excited for this engagement, so thank you for hosting this public hearing. We've been discussing for months about how to increase engagement, and there's been a lot of different creative tools used. But it's great to hear from more voices that we can take into consideration, so thank you. I use Needham Center every day. I drive, I walk, I bike, I eat, shop, and bike my kids to school through the center. I wish that Needham Center felt more comfortable overall. It's a space that often we find ourselves actively avoiding when we get outside, to be out and active. I want to point out two particular concerns in addition to additional concerns that have already been mentioned tonight around speed and safety. The two crossings at Pinkering and Carmella's, and also the slip lane, pose an inherent threat. As many of you know, and just disclosure to the room, I work in the field of transportation and infrastructure, and I've been working on safety issues for years. I was responsible at the state to read fatal crash reports every week and be on the front line of helping respond to crashes. And one of the shifts that's happening in the industry is how do we go from being reactive, just looking at where a crash happened, trying to make an improvement, and actually starting to be proactive and starting to say, we actually know what poses threats, whether you're driving, whether you're walking, biking, scooting, any which way. We know speed is one of the hugest threats. We know cars are getting fundamentally bigger and heavier, which makes them a larger threat for safety for those driving, for people in the car, as well as people outside of the car. And we also know that Needham has a couple of threats, like the four-lane pedestrian crossings that are unsignaled and no safe space to be, is, just increases your chances of a crash significantly. So I joined the committee in hopes to participate actively and improve safety, and here tonight to kind of double down on that commitment to say, whatever the design is, I hope that we set a minimum bar, that we adopt the most basic standards of safety so that I don't have to think twice when I'm walking with my kids in town, and that we can get out and be out and active. I'll also just say that I envision not just a Needham Center, but a Needham as a whole that is safer, a fully completed sidewalk network, a fully completed bike network. But I recognize that it's hard, you have to start somewhere, and every first step is the hardest because it's like, well, it doesn't connect to anything. So let's start, the town has already made strides, and let's continue to do that. And finally, I envision being 100 years old, living in Needham, and still biking, and still being really active for my health and for joy and the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, our next, oh.
Just quickly.
Do you want to say something?
Yes.
You can tilt it down if you need to.
Okay, I don't.
Do you want me to say it?
Yeah. This is Max. He lives at 242 Denham Avenue. He has started biking to Sunita. We live on Denham Ave, and we bike all the way across town. And he drew you a picture, which he's going to submit for public comment while he was at school, not prompted by me, that what he sees regularly is that when we're crossing, cars are constantly taking rights on red while we're in the crosswalk trying to bike to school. And he wants to put that on the record, and he'll send you his picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. All right, thank you, Max. Bob, I'm going to ask you to hang on just one second. We do finally have an online person who's put their hand up, so we're going to welcome, is that Joe? Joe Leghorn. Once he moves over. Hey, Joe. Please get started by stating your full name and your address for the record. You've got to unmute, Joe.
Mute. Okay, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? There I am.
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
There I am in the Baker Estates. So I want to follow up on the issue that Max just raised with traffic enforcement. We don't enforce traffic laws in Needham. I live at 40 Linden Street, have lived there for 42 years now. And at this point, I think I'm, I feel like the Lorax speaking for the downtown area. The issue that Needham is full of SCOTF laws with regard to traffic enforcement. There is a, you know, don't block the intersection at Maple and Great Plain. Cars routinely ignore that. And so I think that Max is right, we need traffic enforcement. The other thing, too, is, nobody is focused on this, is left turns with regard to what's going on in trying to go to one lane. That is simply going to back up traffic. And the other thing, when I look at the study area, it is simply the downtown corridor between Linden and Warren and doesn't account for the side streets. Right now, people routinely cut down Linden Street. We're also dealing with high-rock, high-rock school traffic. Trying to back out or pull out of your driveway can sometimes be a five-minute escapade trying to get out there. And, you know, I think that that affects, you know, the livability of places. And, you know, I think that that affects, you know, the livability of places on Linden Street. So I really think that, you know, the other thing is, I was talking to somebody in a business today, and so like, we haven't had an economic analysis done. We haven't had a town, you know, a town or urban plan or look at what's going on. I think we've taken a very narrow approach of just looking at traffic, traffic, traffic. We need a holistic approach to how we can make Needham Center better and more economically viable for the businesses there and more fun for the residents and livable for the surrounding neighborhoods. And right now, I just don't see that happening, and it may be because the funding sources focus only on safety, bike lanes, you know. I think about it, and, you know, at one point, the Division of Needham was talking about encouraging small businesses in downtown. And then at the town meeting, it was said it's all about pedestrian biking and traffic safety. Well, what is it? Is it one or the other or both? And the other thing...
Thanks, Joe. I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to just wrap it up, okay, so that we can get on to more comments as well. That's three minutes.
Did I use my three minutes or not?
You did, yeah. Sorry.
All right. Well, you've got my comments, you've got my photos, and see you at town meeting.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob. Bob Smart, 25 Mayo Ave. I want to talk about a couple of things. Bike lanes and traffic. With regard to bike lanes, you know, dedicated bike lanes going through the center of town, I'm not, I'm not persuaded that they're necessary. I used to bike a lot more than I do now, and generally, I try to avoid biking through the downtown. And I always did because you have to keep stopping, you know. You ride for, you ride for 100 feet, and then you have to stop. You've got to wait for two minutes for a traffic light to change. And you ride another, another 100 yards, and you've got to stop again for another traffic light. I'm thinking right now, we're going from Mayo Avenue, you know, heading west towards, towards Wellesley. And I think that most people that do biking, that are just going through town, are going to avoid the downtown because there are better ways to get both east-west and north-south than going through the center of town. The other thing about biking bikers is, if somebody's going to bike to the downtown, it seems to me that they're going to stop right at the outskirts of the downtown. Like for me, where I'm coming from near Pollard, I would, I would, I would stop at Greenfield if they're, and, and park my bike right there, and then I'd walk from there. I wouldn't ride through town. And I think that's true for people coming in any direction. So I don't think you need the bike lanes for people that are going through. With regard to traffic, or, I'm sorry, parking, I've been hearing about parking problems in Needham Center since 1980 when I moved here. And I have to say, I personally have never had a problem parking in the downtown. But a lot of people feel that it is a problem, so if a lot of people feel it's a problem, it's a problem. And what I would recommend to the Select Board and to this, to this committee is that you can't, our friend Mo Handel, back when Mo and I were on the planning board, Mo did a kind of, because we were concerned about, concerned about parking, lack of adequate parking. He did a little walking tour. He basically, you know, took a compass to the map, a fairly short distance, I think it was like four, maybe 400 feet from, from the town hall, just drew a big circle. And he walked around, and he looked at peak times, at, at all of the private parking spaces that are available all through the downtown. And that, this is, this is something that, that could be addressed with zoning changes using those parking spaces.
Yes.
You know, because, am I at three?
You are at three, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll write to you.
But I will say just that this is something that we are looking at, redistribution of parking, permit parking, private parking, public parking.
Okay.
Contract parking, all of it.
I'll show you something.
So very good point. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mona Steinberg, and I live 29 Shady Lane. I'm a resident here for 40 years, so I've seen a lot of changes in this town when I first moved here. And I thank you for the park. I think it's beautiful. I think it should be used more often, but I am like really shocked how people feel it's so dangerous downtown Needham. I biked with my kids. I was Mother's Day biking with my husband. There is not a frightened place to bike. We have so many traffic lights. They're clearly marked, you know, for people to stop. If you don't want to bike through, we're talking about two blocks, literally two blocks for bikes, then avoid downtown biking through it. Walk your bike or, you know, just bike as safely as possible. I think that we have a majority of cars. We haven't addressed the traffic patterns, which the left turns would, would be a disaster. The right would back up traffic. Have we looked at the police and the fire department getting through during them? Have we also looked at the MBTA if we're talking about the future? Those buildings, those residents are going to have cars. They're not all going to travel by the train. So have we looked at that? That's going to add to traffic. Why would you cut back if we already have a horrible traffic situation? You know, there's going to be more desire to come here. We're going to have more stores here with the MBTA project. And now that brings me, it's a little off, but I, it's a lot of rumors, the old Muzzy property. The old Muzzy property, they want to build housing. I don't know if they've contacted the Select Board to ask for a change in the amount of units that they would like, you know, for the Bullfinch Group. I mean, if the Bullfinch Group is going to be, build housing and, you know, multipurpose there, you know, stores, so there's more traffic. That's not in my mind being a forethinker, you know, to look forward and to say, we have a problem now, let's fix it, but not let's harm ourselves. And if you look at even Mayo Woo is going a 30-day pause in Boston and Brookline because store owners are saying they're hurt by this traffic, you know, and by bike lanes. It just doesn't make any sense to me. What makes sense is just continuing to make, you know, if we need some more park benches at Greenfield or here, if we need more bike racks. I mean, a safety, the only safety I see is between Greenfield and what used to be the old Hillcrest Gardens. That crosswalk, make it elevated.
Thank you, Mona.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Elizabeth or Liz Kiponia. I live at 27 Highland Terrace, and I have a couple of ideas. I'll keep it short. Most everybody said everything so far, but nobody mentioned, but I saw it in some of the photos that you showed at the beginning, that during the holiday season, which I believe is Thanksgiving to New Year's, Needham puts a red bag over the parking meters, and the parking is free. And that's done to attract people to shop local. So I don't understand how by removing parking spots, you're going to attract more people that way. And also, I don't think that the bike lanes will make up for it. Now, I have a good idea how to solve this problem that'll be far less expensive than, I don't know how much this will cost in the years of work that will go into it. Look at Needham Street and Newton, and you can see what's going on over there. Four years, and they're not done with this. I would suggest that Needham could invest in a couple of electric shuttles, small shuttle buses, and take the people from maybe starting where the commuter rail spots are, where they can park their car there perhaps, and then go to the, take the little shuttle, go downtown, do their shopping, eat their food, and then come back. And if you had a couple, I think it would help. I think it's an idea worth considering, especially Lois SoCal was saying at 92, you know, she can't walk or bike the distance. So I think it'll help a lot of people, also young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Hi, Karen.
Hello, Madam Chair. Oops, I'm a little loud. I always have a loud voice. I'm very nervous. I'm a former preschool teacher, so my audience is usually four-year-olds. So grownups are a little hard for me. We're here because we care about the town like everybody else. My name is Karen Carpenter. This is my husband, Stu. We own Copley Motor Cars. We moved our business here 20 years ago, and we live at 28 Douglas Road in Needham, where we have lived in the same house for 40 years. We feel fortunate to live in this amazing community. We have never felt the need to step up until now. There were a lot of questions, a lot of disconnects, and since April 9th, when most of us found out that this was happening, it felt wrong on so many levels. And we know it wasn't intentional, and we know nobody meant to do it, but you had a room full of business meeting. You had businesses and property owners at that business meeting. And I wish that meeting had been publicized because there were many compelling statements, many heartfelt statements, and many people, much smarter than I, talking about what this project is going to do if we do the road diet and the bike lanes. And so I just want to put some information out there because I think contrary to what has been put out there, business and property owners have never been against new, improved, and much-needed safety measures in the center for everyone. For this, it has always been about the reducing or removing parking, the redirecting traffic, everybody's customers away from the center and into surrounding neighborhoods, and delivery issues. We are not the least bit angry. I've had a few people come up to me in the grocery store, why is everybody so angry? We're not angry just because we're questioning what's happening. We live here, our tax money goes into the town, we see projects go up, and three years later, they're ripped up again because, oops, we made a mistake. And I know that's not intentional either, but if you did a traffic study, when you put up the, the long walks across the two large intersections, how come nobody noticed that the walk times were too short? And, and that's something that Lou brought up, which I'd like to piggyback on because you're not, you're saying it's a safety issue, but nobody's thinking about, well, what are you going to do now? And so that was a concern to us. And I think, I'm sorry that bikers get a bad rap, and I wish I could change that narrative. We heard from a couple of people who are being sworn at on the street, and that's never acceptable, and that's horrifying to me. Bikers are a small minority, however, compared to the Needham community at large, who use their cars to get around, and for some, that's their only mode of transportation. For others who are busy with their families and are shuttling between school and activities, they come to Needham Center in their cars. There are some who have mobility issues, who drive and need to park in front of a store or close to it, to risk businesses by implementing an experimental road diet with bike lanes next spring or summer. Now somebody's talking about it's going to be six-plus months, and you might do it in October. I hope you're not going to do that before Christmas during the holidays.
We've, we've committed to assessing the plan, and we've put it off for at least six months. So Karen, I, I love what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I do see that there's a huge line of people coming in.
Yeah, I do have, I do have some feedback, so I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, these are the things.
Quickly, please.
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
So people have talked about it, sync the lights to the train. People asked why that wasn't done when the center was done. Make the walk light signals longer so people don't have to rush across the street. Put speed humps and better lighting at Pinkering and Maple. These all could have done, been done in earlier years as the restaurants. Some of them have been here for decades. More, we have more population, we have more people. I'm not sure why we waited until now to do this. Post-speed limit signs approaching the center and in the, in the center. Repair the sidewalks as you've been doing and make them ADA compliant. I think, I think the majority of people feel like there's a lot that can be done that's more fiscally responsible than spending our tax dollars with all the enormous projects that have been coming out of town meeting.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
I'm the other half of Karen and Stu Carpenter. I hope I get my three minutes, too. It's not allocated per family. So two terms I had not heard of before the March meeting with Kevin. I didn't know the words road diet, and I didn't know the words regional cut through. The road diet, I'm absolutely opposed to, and I'm no traffic engineer, I'm not even a college graduate, but I know that if we go from four lanes to two, the traffic is, the congestion is just going to be incredible, and it's going to back up into the neighborhood streets. So what I am for, as Karen said, I want good sidewalks, I want green space, I want all that, but the road diet, I think, is, is a disastrous idea because of what it'll do to the downtown businesses. Fortunately, I have my own onsite parking. Fortunately, I'm not affected by tariffs, but I know my fellow business owners are terribly concerned about the road diet and how it possibly could limit their visibility and eliminate parking. Parking is a big, big deal. Your, your committee overlooks the Mobility and Planning Committee also, which has a couple of bike lane parking reduction projects in the works, I believe. So I emailed the Mobility and Planning Committee last Wednesday, and I did not, I asked them for an outline or a diagram or a schematic or something that explains what's going to happen between May and Rosemary and Hillcrest and Broadmeadow. I didn't receive, I didn't receive an email back in an entire week. And yet, huh? And yet, when did I get the email back? Five minutes ago, all in this meeting. Interesting timing. I, I don't know why, so I can't be prepared, but I, I think, I think the town should know that this road diet is getting huge publicity, but I think the town should also know that there's something in the works to eliminate parking, I believe, from May to Rosemary and from Hillcrest to Broadmeadow. Now, completely incorrect, but that's why I emailed a week ago, and now I'm just getting the information tonight.
Thanks, Stu.
So I think that's terrible. One last thought, one last thought about the regional cut through. I don't know if you know it, and other than Lois, where'd she go? She's the closest one to being alive when 135 came into being. Route 135 came into being in 1927. So by definition, Route 135 is a regional cut through, and it's been a regional cut through for 100 years. We want a regional cut through. We want people coming from Natick and Wellesley into Needham. We want people coming off of 128 into Needham to go to our shops, to go to our restaurants. We don't want to eliminate the regional cut through. We want to encourage the regional cut through, which will help our town thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Beth Tuck, and I live at 549 High Rock Street. I want to emphasize how important I believe it is for our town to be forward-thinking when it comes to transportation and continuing to build a vibrant, thriving center. We're at a crossroads now, and now's the time to think about how we want to evolve for the future. I've lived in Needham for almost nine years with my husband and two kids. I use multi-mode transportation all the time. I bike and take the train to Cambridge, and I often walk, bike, and drive around town. And I feel very fortunate to live in a town with the commuter trail, commuter train. I'm also co-founder of Let's Bike Needham, a group that organizes rides mostly for moms. When I think about my wishes of town, I envision us to be a place where people feel safe to walk, run, bike, roll, and drive, a town where kids can safely walk or ride their bikes to school no matter where they live, an area with vibrant stores and restaurants, a center where people from our town and surrounding towns will want to visit, and a place that is accessible by many types of people who want to use it. And I don't believe this needs to be mutually exclusive. I'm here because I'm a resident who feels very unsafe walking and biking through town, which shouldn't be the case. I have a friend who was hit by a car last summer in one of our crosswalks. I often see drivers fail to yield to pedestrians. I see bikes on sidewalks as they approach town because they feel unsafe on the roads. because they feel unsafe on the roads. And as a driver, I know that the lights and lanes aren't optimized for throughput through our town. There must be a safe way for our people to share our space. And to me, walking and biking are year-round activities and I want to be safe all the time. I see a future where I'm confident my kids can bike from one side of the town to the other. I envision Needham as a place where we can frequent our local businesses on foot, bike, or car. And I want Needham to be a place where we respect each other's chosen modes of transportation and we build and encourage alternate ways of getting around. We shouldn't continue to do what exists today. We need to revitalize our town. And we shouldn't reject things that feel uncomfortable. We should listen and we should be open to ideas. And I thank you for continuing to put them forth. Let's try new ways of getting around. Let's design for multi-mode transportation. Let's make our town accessible to current and future residents. And let's test the new ideas and let's get feedback quickly and then let's make adjustments as necessary. And I'm always here to talk. Even though people might not bike to town today, they will tomorrow if the infrastructure was in place. Let's be forward-thinking and design for what's possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Hi, my name is Julie Ben-David. Sorry, I don't have a speech prepared and I'm not a very good public speaker either, so excuse me. I'm the owner of Needham Florist. My husband and I have owned Needham Florist for 30 years. And in the 30 years that we've owned Needham Florist, there has not been a single cyclist that has come to my store to buy a vase of flowers or a balloon bouquet. It's just not possible. I will go out of business if this road diet goes into effect. All of my business is based on vases of flowers. You can't pedal home with glassware. You can't pedal home with balloon bouquets. Additionally, much of my business comes from grieving families from area funeral homes. Grieving families drive to my store. They don't pedal to my store. They drive to my store from funeral homes to book funeral flowers for the area funerals. Also, we have hospital. We see people come from the hospital to get flowers for their loved ones that are in the hospital. They're driving to our store. Additionally, much of our business comes from Olin College, Wellesley College, Babson College for graduations and to visit loved ones. People drive to my store. They do not pedal to my store to buy anything at my store. And the same is true for many of the stores in my block and throughout the center. Nobody is pedaling home with a gallon of paint from Sherwin-Williams. Nobody is pedaling home with cases of beer or bottles of wine from any of our wine stores. Nobody's pedaling home to purchase blinds from Home Trends. It just doesn't happen. Our businesses will suffer. We will be out of business with this road diet. Additionally, we need parking. When I was informed by both JP and Amy Hassan from the town, they walked into my store. They informed me about this meeting at 6:30 this evening. Ironically, two customers were in my store. Who were the two customers? There was a senior citizen who requested to sit in my chair because she needed to sit. And then, right after her, a woman with a walker with her aide came into my store. These people need parking and they come by vehicle. They're not pedaling to and from my store. And I hope that you really consider all of the businesses because it's not just about, you know, driving to town to get an ice cream or driving to go out for dinner. Much of the businesses here in town, we need motorists. We need motorists to take goods back. We need motorists to shop. And not a single shopper has been in my store that has been a cyclist in 30 years. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Jones and I'm both a rep of Needham for 30 years and I own Hearthstone Home on Great Plain Ave. I love the idea of all the trees and the beautiful layouts that you have all come up with. But I'm concerned about the rhythm of the day-to-day business of all of us in the center of town. The UPS man, the FedEx man, you know, double-park their trucks. They're running in, they're running out. They're trying not to, you know, cause a problem with people trying to get around their trucks. The emergency vehicles are constantly racing through the center of town. And I just don't understand when there's going to be two lanes of traffic, how the emergency vehicles are supposed to go around whoever's trying to pull over. So those are the regular things that I see every day. You know, people trying to make deliveries, the mail lady. I know in the center of Wellesley, there are back parking lots and another parallel road where the businesses accept their deliveries through the back of their shops. We don't have that. So, you know, I get furniture deliveries. I get deliveries every day from various couriers. So I'm concerned about the additional gridlock that those activities will cause. And regarding the snow, I have a lot of older clients that come in my shop too. And, you know, the mound of snow that becomes hard ice on the side of the road in the middle of winter is definitely a safety issue for those people trying to, you know, climb over that mountain of ice to try and, you know, there's little spaces that are shuffled out so they can, you know, get through. So I think that because our town is so old, there just isn't space to do the ideas that you guys are proposing. And one more thing, you know, everyone's worried about our retail businesses suffering given the economic environment of our country right now. I would say, nobody is in retail to, you know, make it big. We're all in it because we enjoy it. We enjoy our town. We enjoy the interaction with our clients and customers. And we want to just keep on doing that.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Paul Iantosker. I live at 21 Ingleside Road, Needham. I've been here for 43 years. My children and I all ride bikes. We ride through Needham Center, especially in the nice weather, all the time. I honestly don't have a problem. You say, if you narrow two lanes to one lane, you don't think that will double the time it takes to get through an intersection? It's simple math. If you have 50 cars in each lane and you narrow it to one lane, now you have 100 cars going through one lane. It will double the time it takes to go through a lane. This is suburbia. It's not the city of Boston. I moved from Boston to live in suburbia. I love Needham. I love the town. I love the stores. I love the parks. I like it just the way it is. If you want more people to come into Needham Center, find a solution to allow restaurants to have more outside dining. People love it. But you people keep saying, you can't do it, you can't do it. We can't allow it. Maybe you should find a way to allow it and people will walk downtown and have a nice dinner. All of the restaurants with outdoor dining do exceptionally well. You mentioned that the budget to pay for all of this work hasn't really been ironed out. Which means, you're going to take it from our tax base, or at least a percentage of it. Well, my taxes have tripled in a number of years. And all the new homes in Needham are paying $30,000 a year in taxes. You can't keep going back to the taxpayers and say, give us more money, give us more money. You've got schools to build. And I understand that you spent $100 million... No, $100,000? Or was it $1 million? How much did the study cost? If I may ask one question. A million dollars? It's a million. And you already spent a million dollars to do a study?
There's no, no, sir, there's no. We have spent, like, $80,000 so far.
Total for everything, all the studies?
Yeah.
But you have more to spend?
And there's a grant that... Let's not worry about the cost. I hear your point. I hear your point.
Okay. So maybe you should ask people if they want this before you start spending their money.
Let's hold our applause till the end.
So I have a saying. If it works, don't break it. Leave Needham the way it is. You want to plant some trees, put some benches, wonderful. But don't screw up the traffic because once you do, you can't undo it. We're going to lose 20% of our businesses. I've talked to several big business owners. How are you going to do deliveries? You're going to have a loading zone? I can see a 10-wheel truck coming up to a loading zone and rolling all the supplies down two blocks. So bring it into the store. That's assuming he can park in your loading zone. I don't think that's going to work at all.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm not done yet.
That's your three minutes.
I haven't been three minutes. I have my timer on.
Paul, we want to give everyone a chance to speak.
All of the residents here came out tonight to tell you how they feel. I hope that you take what they said to heart and listen to them and don't just try to shove it down their throats and say you think you know better. Because you don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Craig. I'm at 59 Mount Vernon Avenue and I've been in Needham for 21 years. At the beginning tonight, the committee expressed concern that visits to Needham Center are purpose-based rather than destination-based. But it's not clear to me that purpose-based visits to town are less desirable than destination-based visits. Because the realities of the busy lives of all the residents is that most of us, most of our visits to town center are in fact purpose-based because we're getting our bagels, we're getting our Dunkin', we're getting our cards and gifts, our flowers, our prescriptions. We go to exercise class. We go to restaurants, either to eat in or take out. We go to town hall to do business. So purpose-based visits to the town center are exactly what gives Needham life, what gives life to this town. And the businesses in our town are essential, not only to meeting our daily needs, but also to the quality of life here in Needham. An important part of that for me is, apart from, you know, getting what I need, is just the positive interactions with the business owners in town brings a lot of joy to my life here as a resident of Needham. And I know it was also stated at one point that the businesses, the affected businesses were surveyed. And I'm just curious as to when and how and what's, how that input is being incorporated into the proposals. Because I, and I know others speaking here tonight, have heard consistently from business owners in town that they weren't informed of the process in a timely fashion. So I respectfully request that the committee give serious consideration to whether further work on this project would truly represent progress toward widely sought-after improvements in town. Or rather, would it be merely an escalation of commitment to a project that most residents and businesses do not want simply because the process has been started? Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Hi, I'm Hillary Bruhl. I live at 87 Thornton Road. And I'm a professional graphic designer, so I appreciate what the design process is like. And I know it's iterative and there are multiple rounds of revisions and feedback. So I just thought I'd give a little feedback in light of that. There's been a lot of discussion of two lanes of traffic versus four lanes of traffic. And I do have concerns over going down to two lanes. I will say, though, that the current traffic pattern of four lanes is really unpleasant in town. And I feel like when I'm driving through town, I am constantly having an inner dialogue like, which lane should I be in? Should I be in the left lane? Should I be in the right lane? Is that person going to take a left? And I'm also constantly checking for, even if I choose the right lane and there's somebody in the left lane who's going to cut in front of me to avoid the person taking the left turn in front of them. The chaos of, part of the reason why people feel that we need four lanes of traffic is because there are so many people taking left turns in town. And so people use the second lane to get around the people who are taking left turns. And this is especially perilous coming off of the turn onto Chapel. So you go to the right lane to avoid the person taking the left and then you're in the right turn lonely lane. So then you get back into the left lane. And I have a teenage driver who I've been trying to coach through town. And when I'm trying to explain, they're like, maybe you should be in this lane, maybe you should be that lane. It's really tricky. And so I'm wondering if there might be a compromise of having one lane of through traffic on either side and then we have a third lane that would provide a place for people to take dedicated left turns at the various intersections. So it would take, you know, it would reduce how much pavement we're dedicating to traffic, but it wouldn't bring us down to one lane in either direction where now you've got cars backed up behind someone who's taking a left. I know that part, what might be sacrificed is the bike lanes, but I do feel like pedestrian safety and driver safety in town, there are more stakeholders in that sense that it's just, it's not, it doesn't feel safe driving through town and it doesn't feel safe walking in town because there is so much jockeying to avoid turning cars. And I think there is also an issue with emergency vehicles, school buses, you know, all these larger vehicles coming through town. So I would just offer that as maybe a possibility of, can we look at having dedicated turning lanes in addition to these through lanes going through town? Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Hi, I'm Charlie Nanda. I live at 38 Fuller Road. You may know me from such projects as the Panzi mural. I'm a public art installation administrator. I've also worked on public art projects in the middle of town at Haddock and McLeod Plaza, which was a collaboration between Copley Motors, Middlesex Bank, Needham Gardens Center, and Katie Klein Orthodontics. Some of these projects for public art have brought together a lot of stakeholders and community engagement throughout the process. So I really love how this envisioned Needham plan calls for public art. And I know nobody has mentioned that tonight. And so I'm an arts and culture advocate, so I thought I'd throw that in there. You might also know me as the administrator for the Jersey Barriers that are temporary outdoor dining structures in downtown. Four artists came together to paint those. Those were temporary solutions for traffic calming. Traffic calming is one of the goals of Needham's Arts and Culture Action Plan using painted installations. I loved the pictures of the aesthetic surface treatments in the plan. Those are actually in my house, just called Art on the Ground. I know they don't always last a long time, but they're gorgeous and they help with bump outs. And also, I wanted to say that last month, three children lost their legs in the town hall center. They were bronze. They were bronze children. They were not real. They were the public art piece that was in the middle of town. Sorry, I just wanted to get your attention, make sure you're listening. But I do believe they were hit by a car from a person that hit a pedestrian first. The pedestrian was jaywalking. That is not the kind of traffic calming public art is supposed to be doing, but thank goodness it was there because it could have been children. Sometimes there's a child holding hands as the last person in that circle of peace. And I know you all love the Circle of Peace sculpture. And so we'll all be happy when that comes back to town. So thank you. And I know we can all come together on public art, so I love that opportunity for engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hello, my name is Gershon Gotch. I live at 79 Pleasant Street. So I've lived in Needham 17 years most recently, but I also grew up in Needham. My parents have a house in Needham. My brother has a third house in Needham. Reason I moved back to Needham, besides having family here, is I really like the walkability of the town, the sidewalks. My family, we walk and bike whenever we can. Whenever we go to restaurants, we walk and bike. There's a lot of cyclists on my street as well. But my point really isn't that there's so many cyclists. There are some, so I'm here speaking for that. But it's a, biking is a somewhat vulnerable pop... bikers are somewhat of a vulnerable population. So, for example, my nephew, who's 11 and lives on the Wellesley border, he will bike over to my house. And, you know, sometimes I worry a little bit about this sort of thing. I really appreciate this kind of scientific way of going about things, measuring traffic, doing a pilot study. I think this is a really good thing. I also appreciate listening to the business owners today. And I don't want this to be an us versus... And I don't want this to be an us-versus-them kind of thing. I wouldn't want to take anything away from the local businesses. I like the idea of outdoor dining and all these other ideas that have been thrown out there. So, kind of taking in all the feedback. In terms of improving it for bikers, besides, you know, making it safe in the center, this comment is more to the select board than the Envision project. Biking has to be looked at more holistically throughout the town, and having a bike plan that covers not just the center. That's what really makes biking better for people, is to have a plan so that you can get really from anywhere to anywhere safely, not just addressing the center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will just say that a bike plan throughout the town is something that is being worked on and that we do have, can implement it all at once, so we're on it.
Hi, I'm Bob Hansel. Excuse me, I live at 11 Parkman Way. And I am a commercial landlord in the downtown area. And I was invited to your meeting that you hosted for the Business and Real Estate Community on May 1st. And at that meeting, it was mentioned that there are scenarios that would not limit or not lose any parking. And in fact, there was one scenario that would add six parking spaces to the downtown area. I'd really like to learn more about that, and I would encourage you to consider that before you roll out any pilot program. And also at that meeting, one of the pillars of this project was economic vitality. And when you laid out the three pillars of the project earlier in the meeting, I didn't see economic vitality. And I would recommend and encourage you to add that back to this proposal. Thank you.
The full slideshow is available online, and it does have the previous iterations, including the concept plan that he's referred to, so you can see it there. And economic vitality is still part of this, a major part of this, so just, go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Phil Brandish. I live at 44 Pleasant Street. Lived in Needham for 16 years, three kids, the school system, served seven years on town meeting. I bike a lot. I bike to work in Boston from Needham about four days a week. I wince when I see the bike lanes because I know how divisive they are. So, you know, I think separated bike lanes, they are the way to go unfortunately, because if they're continuous with the lane that the car is using, what typically happens is cars park, use that for parking. That's what happens in Boston. And the bikers get squeezed. But the reality is, from my perspective, is they're sort of the least bad option. As my friend Gershon said, bikers are essentially a vulnerable population. It's really bad if you get hit. There's a lot of momentum in a car. I think, somebody earlier said, maybe more enforcement of the existing traffic laws would be good. I see so many, as a bike commuter, I see so many people running red lights, turning right on red, not giving adequate passing distance and so on. I know for a fact there's a lot of people out there that would bike if it was, if people felt safe. My wife bikes to her job in Wellesley. She avoids the center of town because she's just afraid to bike there. Same goes for my kids. But, you know, it's, this is really a tough one, because I very much empathize with the views of other people and the frustrations around bike lanes. So, you know, I'm not sure quite what the right answer is, maybe some kind of halfway house. So if I could encourage the select board just to keep cranking on, thinking of solutions. I'm sure there's one out there. We'll find it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Herman. I lived at 13 Carey Road for about 48 years. My questions and comments are more big picture, and they're relevant to both Envision and Highland Avenue that could extend the bike lanes from the center. It's been presented as two separate projects, but I'm not sure they really are. The second part of this project is the narrowing of Highland Avenue to build out raised bike lanes. It's in 25% design now, and I'm curious if any of the businesses and professional offices along Highland Avenue were notified of the loss or modification to on-street parking? And are the residents along Highland Avenue aware of possible changes to their frontage? Relevant to both the center and Highland Avenue, I have some questions. I'd like to know where and how the cars will be able to pull over and allow for the passage of public safety vehicles. This may be where Highland Avenue is already narrow or where there are difficult turns onto Great Plain from the fire station in the center. I'd be interested to know if e-bikes, BlueBikes, and the variety of e-cargo bikes currently used in the cities will be utilized. Diversion of traffic to side streets is another question. I requested the traffic study generated for Envision that addressed diversion. I was told it would only be available to me when completed, yet decisions have been made based on this study. My request is still outstanding. Traffic will be diverted to solely residential streets, and I'm not sure our residential streets were designed to handle more traffic and particularly more truck traffic. The entire project, the center and Highland Avenue, will connect Needham Street and Newton to Needham Center via bike lanes. The people that I see biking today do not want to stop at intersections just to guess. They seem to prefer streets that do not require lots of stopping. This is not that project. There is another aspect of bike lanes that needs to be answered. Denham Avenue between Great Plain and South Street has about 40 signs, 20 on each side noting bike routes, and it's only about a mile long. I've got it. I think it's great. I have that message, and I hope everybody in town does. But is this the amount of signage required that will be needed in the town center and along Highland Avenue? If it is a question of Mass DOT funding for the intersections, the Central Avenue and Honeywell intersection improvement is being funded by Mass DOT without major modifications to Central Avenue bike lanes. Families move to Needham from Cambridge, Newton, Arlington, and West Roxbury. They move here because they no longer want to live in a city or city-like town. I'm not sure this meets the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Hi, Holly.
Hi, I'm Holly Clark. I live at 1652 Central Avenue. And as I've listened this evening, first, I think it is a really good thing that the select board stepped in and said there needs to be a pause. So, and I think that was the first step, and I commend you for that. And I hope you will also be able to drive the next step, which respectfully to encourage, or frankly, to tell the committee that it needs to take a step back and think. As I've listened, the first question should be, what is the problem we are trying to solve? Or to put it maybe more positively, what is it we are trying to achieve? If economic vitality is one of the goals, I think we have to stop and listen to the businesses that have made Needham their home, and they have made a commitment to the town. So, and their on-the-ground information is as valid, if not more valid, than any study or any other, what happened in some other town in some other state at some other place. It's just incredibly valuable information. And the second thing, as I was listening, is there's a lot of information we got today that will not require waiting till whatever we do to begin getting addressed. If people are saying they're in town and they're seeing drivers not following traffic laws, that's a call to the police department, and that's a call to the chief to say, how can we step in right now? And that, too, will give more information that can inform this project, but it'll also make things safer if that's in fact an issue. And in terms of money and funding, if a condition of the grant is to do something that we do not want to do, that is not of value to the town. It just isn't. And I truly appreciate that people are trying to access other funds. But if it ends up requiring us to do something we don't want that is not helpful, then it's just wrong. And as somebody just said, we just continue to need to work the problem. We just haven't hit the solution yet. And, there was one other thing. So, the other thing is, when we have these committees and we give them tasks, you know, they focus on the task they're given. And so this is focused on what to do about town center. And we, you know, folks are here talking about they want to bike. Other folks are saying they want to walk in town. And you've heard some people, I'm gonna ignore that for 10 seconds, who do not live in the center of town, and they have needs to. And there are other projects. There are other crosswalks that need to be put in. There have been, we heard the other night, someone saying they asked for a sidewalk. They got told it's 30 years from now. Okay, in my section of town, if you do this project, Lois may be going to Newton. My end of town is going to Wellesley, because they can't get in town.
Thanks, Holly.
Good evening. Jerry Connolly, Needham resident, Tower Avenue. I find myself in the rare situation of driving to downtown Needham. I don't do that often because, as you've heard, traffic and parking are problematic. I park in a private business parking lot, so I'm hoping my car is there when I get back. But I think if I go back before moving to Needham, 30-odd years ago, I actually grew up in Newton Upper Falls. And for 40 years, we've been talking about improving the N2 corridor. And now that the N2 corridor is, we solved a major choke point with the bridge. What do we have? We have two lanes of traffic, but we have two bike lanes that are, of course, not used. And so we're only propagating that issue. I would suggest, everybody in the audience in the group, if you want to understand what the impact of bike lanes and traffic coexistence could be, read the Boston Magazine article from two months ago where they studied the city of Boston, city of Cambridge, and all the work they've had to do to undo very expensive projects because of the problems that were created in a, I would say, idealistic, in a very, I would say, theoretical way, but in practicality, for the reasons you've heard tonight, wasn't always successful. But I'd also say, if you want to look at a study, come and sit by my house, which is just by the intersection of Webster Street. We have the fire station in the temple. In order to accommodate the bike lanes, you moved the right turn on red. So every morning and every afternoon, you have cars entering the temple for parking. You have people coming down Webster Street, and it's gridlocked. And therefore, you're only pushing traffic in every direction and slowing down the flow. So I think we already have enough examples of the problems that could be created in order to solve them. And I think also, I'd like to point out, we're talking about a grant in taxpayer money. Let's remember those grants, it is taxpayer money. So the grants we're already paying for through the state. So we also, that is a burden on us as taxpayers. So I'd like to not have that overlooked, that the state is giving us money. They're not giving us anything because they already took that money from us. So I just want to make sure we recognize that. So, as we've said before, there are a lot of things that town would like to do. I'm still trying to digest how we're spending $20 million on a public works building for 200 employees. So I just don't know that we need to add more to the debt burden right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Oscar Mertz from Broadway. 32-year resident. I've been listening all night. I've been reading Facebook. I've been studying. I've been a planner for 35 years. It's a wonderful process. I'm so glad that we're in this, because you gotta talk about all of the issues, and there are lots of issues. I do not have more than three minutes, so I won't do that. But I do think what I've heard tonight, and what I'm distilling from all of this, is that the one thing we are concerned about is spending money unnecessarily. And yet, we also have issues that have come up in lots of studies that we've done over the course of years. So I think we have to find that balance between what is the thing that we have to do, and a lot of people have spoken about that. I think the one thing I feel that is important for the benefit of this town and for every situation that is unique like this, is that we've solved, first of all, for what is important, and that's safety. And I think that I would propose that we do have a pilot that's coming up, and we have a pause on that. Thank you for that. The value there is that we decide the critical things. And I would say, announcing, my thought is, announcing the downtown so that as drivers arrive, that's at Linden Street and at Warren Street, or somewhere around Greensfield, we actually have, we create a raised table or a speed bump, as people would call it. And that will be a marker for people to understand that they've arrived. I would imagine that we add signage, we really clarify. I like the three lanes with a dedicated turn. I like the idea that bikes could be parked nearby, but maybe not bike lanes. And so what we try and focus on is the balance between parking, access, service, beautification, safety. And I think all of that means that the traffic can move, but the traffic is controlled. But we announce that you've arrived at downtown, out at the edge when you get here, and you know this is people. Speed bumps will slow you down. Speed bumps at every intersection could slow you down. They could be the crosswalks. So a pilot could use some inexpensive version of speed bump, could line up the three lanes with the dedicated turns, and add some signage about, be careful, there are bikes in the area. And so people who do want to bike through in the lanes can. There could be signage in the street. But also encourage that we have biking at the perimeter of town so people can get here, but also find bike routes that do go around town. I think that's the critical thing. So, in short, I think it's safety, it's signage, it's announcing that we want to be more careful about drivers and that the pedestrians are first and foremost important here, and that safety is critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. Before we go to you, ma'am, I'm just gonna go to our online, our second online commenter, and then we'll come to you, okay? Fred, it looks like. Hi, Fred. Just go ahead and unmute. Yeah, there we go. And start with your name and your address, and you have three minutes, okay?
Yeah, good evening. This is Fred Hartman from 919 Great Plain Ave. I was there earlier tonight. I had to leave. Couple things. I have a, I'm a biker. I have a road bike and a mountain bike. I love biking. And I feel this proposal does a little for most of the residents and the businesses in Needham. You asked for suggestions earlier. I'd say, start with repairing the frost heaves and the holes in the sidewalks that are a serious trip hazard. And as some others said earlier, follow through on enforcement for traffic violations, specifically pedestrian-related traffic violations. I have three points. The current proposal is ignore the logistics of truck unloading, FedEx, UPS. We have 53-foot trailers from Cisco, Amazon. All these companies will double park, forcing traffic into opposite lanes. My second point is that it was a mistake taking funds with strings attached to bike lanes. And a second, and even greater mistake, failing to recognize you found yourselves in a sunk cost fallacy. And my third point is, I work as a firefighter in an EMT in another town. I've been to accidents where there've been some serious injuries and deaths. Some of these incidents I will never forget. So safety is a serious business for me. If these proposals move forward, traffic that used to go through downtown will surely be diverted onto side streets. Google Maps will definitely send people via alternate routes. We all know that. So my last comment, which is actually really a question for the committee, is this. When a young child dies chasing a ball onto what used to be a quiet side street, how well will you sleep knowing blood, their blood is on your hands? That's all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Shumaluski, and I'm one of the owners of Secondhand Rose in Needham. And I've raised my kids here, and I love this town. I just wanted to share with you comments that I've gotten from other people that I think are, that you should know. One is a doctor that I go to in Needham. She is a biker. Her husband's a biker, and they live in Cambridge. And she said that what Cambridge did was horrible. She said it's so dangerous that the bikers are actually getting hurt because of the way that the roads are now. Passengers are getting out of the passenger side and hitting... Passengers are getting out of the passenger side and hitting bikers because they don't know that they're there. So I just thought that that was valuable to share. I also, my doctor is in West Roxbury. And so I guess I'm speaking as a customer and not as a business owner, but I've been serving people. My doctor, it's so confusing when I go to West Roxbury. All of the poles that are up, I don't know where to park. There's less parking. So again, I just, you know, these are two communities that I patron, and I find, you know, that I find there's a problem. The third, in Needham, people are, the policing needs to be better. People make U-turns all over the place. People are driving around U-turns. Where are the police officers giving people tickets? I live over near Greendale Avenue. I can't tell you, on three different occasions, I've been at the traffic light, and if I have the green light, and if I don't stop and look, I would be in a head-on, I would be side swiped. So where, you know, I think that we need to be looking at those kinds of things. And then the fourth is, we have those blue bikes years ago. No one used them. Where are they? So that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi, Ken.
Hi. My name is Ken Buckley. I live on Warren Street, a few blocks from town. I feel bad, I'm the last person probably holding people here. I'll be very quick. I am a resident. I'm close to town. I walk when I can, when I have time, and I drive when I don't. I do see the problem with parking. I don't see, I know people have different levels of safety. I feel safe in town. I use the crossing signals. I go through the intersections when the traffic signal turns. So I feel safe enough. What I do feel, though, is that according to the consultant, a lot of what comes through traffic through 135, 60% according to the consultant are trips more than 16 miles, some more than 30, some more than 60. So 60% of the traffic supposedly on 135 coming through Needham Center are from elsewhere, going elsewhere. And if you put the road on a lane diet, I think the studies, or the consultant has said, they hope that it will divert traffic, hopefully to other roads, maybe even other regional highways. But as a prior speaker said, Needham's road, 135, is a diverter road. And trying to get a diverter road, getting traffic to divert off of a diverter road, you're likely going to get them on the side streets. And that is going to cause safety problems outside of the specific corridor. So I really don't know that that's a great idea for safety reasons. And then I do agree with all comments made about enforcement. I was just crossing the street to come to Town Hall tonight, and four cars went by even though I was standing in the crosswalk. So it'd be good if we could at least maybe have the police do, it would be an instant solution for some of the safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I can't understand when you're yelling things out, and also, we're not doing that tonight. We have another comment online. We're having a little trouble getting, we're working on getting you over, Christine, so you can make your comment. This will be the last comment of the evening. There isn't anyone else in line, so I'm assuming that we're not having, cutting anyone off here. We've had over two hours of comments. I appreciate everyone's attendance and participation here tonight.
And if you have a follow-up thought, you can always email.
Always email.
We will continue to read.
And this isn't going to be the last bit. This is a project that is still in design and concept. So we will continue to work on this along with the Envision Committee.
She lowered her hand. Heidi, she lowered her hand.
Oh, all right. It looks like Christine has lowered her hand. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you for participating.
Are we commenting as a board?
I'm just letting them know that public comment is.
Okay. Just to let you know, the board is going to be discussing this now, if people want to stay.
All right. The board is going to continue our meeting, including potentially some discussion, although frankly...
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Sure. We can have a five-minute recess. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Oh, no. Yours, take it. Hello, everybody. We're going to get started again. If you want to continue your conversation, I'm going to ask you to move into the hallway. Thank you. Thank you. Let's take our conversations to the hallway, please. All right. So we just had pretty extensive public comment. We went directly to public comment because we knew everyone came here for that. We didn't want to keep you waiting. But we never did sort of have any kind of board discussion, and none of the board members were asked any questions of Charis or the consultants about the presentation that we heard. Personally, I'm feeling a little overwhelmed, but I think my colleagues have some questions and some discussion points that they would like to have. This is discussion for the board only. Everyone is welcome to listen, but not to participate. So I'm going to open this up to my colleagues for discussion and questions. Marianne, since I know you have questions because you said so at the very beginning, let's start with you.
So I will just say, I think, what my questions are, and I don't need answers tonight, but I just want to know that they're being considered. Part of, I think, the challenge that people have, including me, right, is there was discussion that the parking was only decreasing by 13 spaces, but the visual that I had showed it decreasing by more than half, just looking at what seemed to be presented to us as a concept. So I can't get from one to the other, and I would just like to understand, you know, kind of how that goes. I do think there was a lot of discussion about left turn lanes, and I'm sure you are taking that into consideration. I would wonder, people are very frustrated certainly with what they've seen with some local road diets around us. It sounds to me like there's been some grievous errors in implementing some of those in terms of the response to the economic vitality, the people's confusion that has been described in certain things, et cetera. I don't know if we have some good examples of a community like a Needham that have gone on a road diet. I presume they are out there, and I just don't know what they are. It would be nice to have some good examples. We talk about traffic at 8:00 in the morning and 5:00 in the afternoon. There's also traffic in Needham at 3:00 in the afternoon. It's the kid traffic. And I want to be sure that we are taking a look at that particular window. And then I had two final things. One is the concept drawings. I know that I struggled with the concept drawings just because they felt like they were more urban blocks that were put in there. It would be helpful if the blocks that were there, there's good reason for making them blocks, I get that in a concept drawing, but if they were more aligned with like what the structure is of the buildings that are out there. So literally, when I'm looking, I can visually know where I am as opposed to go, you know, you're saying from the east, and I'm like thinking, okay, wait, which is that exactly? And it doesn't correlate to what I'm looking at. I would also appreciate if the goals, I made a note about them not mentioning economic vitality, and it did come up as well. I do think economic vitality is one of our goals. I think it really was our driver for starting this in the first place, in addition to safety, was we wanted a more vibrant downtown. And vibrant, to me, implies economic vitality. So I think making that clear would be valuable for everybody. Thank you so much.
So I want to talk a little bit about process and priorities. In terms of process, like, I'm really happy and thrilled to see so many people show up tonight and voice their opinions and concerns. But generally, when people show up in a context like this, it's because they feel like they haven't been heard. When we, you know, engage in a public process, we should really engage in it much earlier, I think, even before the consultants are engaged. And that actually was the stated plan a year ago. So in May 2024, when we, there was a question at Town Meeting, you know, how are these funds going to be, Chapter 90 funds going to be used for this project? And the answer at the time was that we don't know because no funding has been committed. And even the town manager said that Great Plains Avenue design amount is not known yet because we were starting with public outreach envisioning. But then we ended up signing contracts. We've signed two contracts, one in October for $686,000, and then another amendment for $187,000. And so we're in this position of kind of putting the cart before the horse. Like, we don't know what we want yet, and yet we're already spending money to do it. So for the future, I do think we need to decide what we want to do, set our priorities before engaging with consultants. In this case, we can't change it now. But what I do think we should do is we should spend time discussing our priorities. And I think turn lanes really have to be a priority. They don't have to be dedicated turn lanes. Right now, we have lanes that are left or straight. I think people want having multiple lanes, you know, to go straight or to turn. And whether that's, you know, in the form of four lanes as is now, or three lanes, there's some flexibility there. But I think that is important to a lot of people, and that's what we heard tonight. I think another piece is safety at crosswalks. There are particular crosswalks, like at Pickering and at, in front of Camellus, that can be improved, that may not need everything else to be improved as well. Another part of the priorities is also funding. I mean, we don't know where funding for this construction project is going to come from. And, you know, instead of, you know, designing only the plan that is maximal, that can do everything, addressing bike lanes and sidewalks and cars, I think we need an option that's more minimal. You know, how do we achieve safe crosswalks? How do we achieve safe merging lanes? Because it's true, going from two lanes to one lane in some places of the downtown is a little hazardous. How do we improve that? But do it in a cost-effective way. Like, I mean, our Director of DPD was really good at estimating what the costs are. Let's give just a ceiling. Like, let's have a, let's have a project that's, you know, a low-cost project that achieves a lot of the goals but won't break the bank. So I think that has to be part of it, too.
Okay, I'm going to push back on that comment. I think that this has been a project that has been ongoing not only over the past three years, certainly as long as I've been on the Select Board, but for many, many decades prior to that. This, I mean, the history of this project can be seen throughout Town Meeting and beyond in many documents. So it may be that at one point, the town manager said that we don't know what we want. And that is exactly what this consultancy is for, to help us to readjust the needs that we have, to take public opinion, and to formulate a plan. The reason we chose this consultancy was because they showed us a bold plan. That's something that the Select Board chose. We saw four consultants, and we chose this because we said you can always dial back and go to minimal. Everyone can do that. But we were looking for, out of the box, to use that expression, and that is, I think, what we were making, we were making sure that we were going to keep an open mind. So I hear that you're not happy with the funds that have been committed, but I think that to not recognize the process that has happened is to do it a service to the town.
Yes, I'll respond to that as well. In 2017...
We're not going to have a back and forth.
Come on, please don't criticize me and then expect me not to defend myself.
You're criticizing the town and undermining the project.
No, 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 no. I'm explaining.
Josh, you're not being recognized now.
Please hide it.
I have some questions for the consultants.
That's really not open process.
Thank you. I would like to know about, as Marianne mentioned, the study on rose diets, but I also think that we need to look at an economic case study because... because what I heard tonight and what I've heard at many of these meetings, including the business meetings, is a level of fear in the voices of the shop owners. And I think that's legitimate. But I also feel like that is ongoing. And actually, Charis came to speak at the Council of Economic Advisers the other day. And what I heard was that that level of fear has been going on since forever, basically. I mean, like, literally 25 years. And so what I'd like to know, what I'd like to be able to separate, if it's possible to separate, is it seems like what the businesses really want is more customers. But they're equating that, it seems like, with more parking. And that may be the way it is. But it also may be that there are other ways to deliver customers. And so I just want to make sure that we're getting at what they really want. Because this is a project that needs to work for everyone. I also would like to know, I think it would be helpful not only to have a road diet study and traffic study, all the things, and, you know, traffic diversion, but also this economic sort of case study, maybe? Because it's unclear to me how we would assess a pilot if we don't know kind of what our before state is and what we're even tracking. So I think that's important to make sure that we have a good understanding of that before we implement a pilot. Because if we can't track it, then that's not going to, it's not going to be work. Okay, Kathy?
Yeah, Madam Chair. So when I think about a project like this, I think that we want to, I don't know, abide by certain principles. So here, we have Needham Center. Needham Center belongs to everyone. We saw from the huge crowd of people that showed up. We don't have crowds of people like this ever. People really care. And everyone has a stake in it. All the residents, all the businesses. And so I guess the principle that I draw from that is that we really need a very broad support for anything that we do. We need consensus. And so with that in mind, I want to compliment the staff and the committee for what they've done because you started with some principles and some goals, and you produced a plan that really accomplishes those. And I think it's frankly difficult to get engagement. You know, we know that. It's really difficult to get engagement. And you really, you were creative, you tried, but you struggled to get the engagement. And now we have the engagement. I mean, this is engagement. We had all kinds of people telling us what they want, which is great. But I think what has happened is surfaced some unintended consequences of the plan. And now that those are surfaced, I think we need to deal with them. And that's why we paused the pilot so that we can deal with them. And so I guess, and this is, I'm going to be the annoying former consultant here speaking, but I guess what I would like to see is sort of more options that we could compare that maybe look rather different from the option that you, you were following our direction. So there's no criticism to you. But, you know, maybe some without bike lanes. You know, maybe some with three or four lanes of traffic as well to compare. Because I think, you know, we've only got so much width in the right way. And that's just what we have. And so we have trade-offs. And I think maybe the best way for us as a community to grapple with the trade-offs is to compare side by side. You can do it this way and have this. You can do it that way and have that. And we can't have, maybe as Josh was saying, we can't maybe have everything. So what do we really value? And compare the costs and the benefits, costs in terms of the use, but also cost in terms of the dollars, everything, and decide what we want. But I think we need the comparison, you know, of some really different models and to get the, you know, get, again, this robust, you know, community discussion. But I think from what we've heard, you know, people are concerned about snarling of traffic. They're concerned about traffic being diverted onto side streets. They're concerned about parking. They're concerned about deliveries. And so I think in those models, you know, finding a way to address those things, I think, you know, because we need a consensus. We can't, I mean, you see the level of engagement. And that's rightly so. People care about the center of their town. We need a consensus. We need broad support to move forward on anything.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a few things. I'm ultimately optimistic about this project. I think this is a great opportunity for the town. Downtown Needham does not work as it is now. And actually, we saw that tonight. Traffic is bad. Parking is bad. Store owners are not bullish. They seem to be terrified. If they were making it in Needham, they would be much happier. So something has to go. We have to fix this problem. And I think we see some, we see things going on. Like, people love the outdoor dining. They love what we learned from the pandemic. That seems to be a plus. So that's a win. I think a lot of this is going to be understanding metrics between options. So like, when you talk about it takes four minutes to get through downtown, does a fix take it to six, four minutes, 15 seconds? Or is it six minutes? I mean, we got to know that. We also think, or I'm thinking, not we, but you consultants have to sort of also do some more education. Like, what are the, what's the value of a road diet? And really, we talk about intelligent removing traffic. And I know Jeff Speck and other road engineers like hate on turn lanes. They say they slow traffic down. But we have need to hear the reason why. Bike lanes, are they lava? I mean, people, I've never seen so many people hate on bike lanes. According to the drawings you have, if there's no one in the bike lane, it's just pedestrian sidewalk space, right? So it's just a wider sidewalk. But if a bike was coming by, they could use a bike lane. Okay. I think the extra lane that we go on a road diet, the road diet provides the space for the bike lane. And still, we could still be at no net loss with parking. Possible, right? We have parking. If we kept parking, ate a lane, we made a bike lane. Aren't we? What's the math here?
This current plan, there are 103 spaces out there right now.
Unadjusted.
Unadjusted, yeah. There are some that really shouldn't be there, but the current plan has 90. And that includes some that were gained because of the geometry. So it's not, there's some taken off on Great Plains. But then because like the way we're doing dead and av, now you've got longer side there to add more spaces. So it's, you know, within the project area. But that's the, that's the current number that we're working with, 90. And the other, the other thing, I think, is confusing. And I, you know, I don't expect people to understand the traffic engineering part of this. But the signals will be part of the new configuration. So it's not like we'll take two lanes away and then keep the signals the way they are. The signal design will change. So that's a, that's a piece that we haven't been able to get to yet because we don't have a plan. But that will certainly be re-engineered to allow flow and--
Are you confident about that?
What?
Are you confident? What's your confidence?
Yeah, no, no, no. Because right now, they're designed for that configuration, the signal designs, for those intersections. And I think, you know, as we heard, they're actually not really designed that well right now. So they're not really working that, that well. But that's a piece that it's hard to bring up. Like, tonight, that was almost impossible for make anyone feel better about that. But that is a piece that's coming, but it's not right now figured out.
All right. But to Kathy's point, could we see an option where we're at 90? If we went up to 96, how many trees are we losing? I mean, so we could--
Right, so that's the thing.
We can weigh these. Okay.
Yes, correct, yeah.
I did just want to chime in quickly about the traffic signals. We're, I don't think Karen suggested that in the proposed conditions, the signals would, like, the flow through downtown would be faster. It's just there are measures that we can, would take to offset the negative impact of a reduction in travel lanes. So not only the efficiency gains that are being made through the bottleneck grant, but if intersections are smaller, you don't need as much time in the signal cycle to accommodate each cars going through it or pedestrians or bicyclists going through it. So it's inherently more efficient.
All right, but not, and not to be answered tonight. But when people say, if you've reduced the number of lanes, you know, cut it in half, then you've reduced the amount, or increased the amount of traffic by the same amount. So could you get an answer?
Yes, we can get an answer, yeah.
Because, I mean, that came up a couple of times.
Yes.
And I'd like to suggest to the Select Board that at our Goals Meeting this summer, or whenever that is, that we escalate this issue of parking management and redistribution. This is something that is sort of on us to prioritize. Because while we have the information from prior parking studies that says that we're not using our existing parking efficiently, it also says that there is enough parking from objective studies. And so, so I guess I'm thinking that as part of this project, rather than a separate piece, we should be looking at what existing parking is available to us and redistributing along with this project. Because if people, you know, can't utilize permit parking that's in the center or don't know where it is or have employees parking on the street rather than in the appropriate spaces for all-day parking, this is part of our problem. And so I guess I'm thinking that we should prioritize that to go along with this. And I'd also like to just say that I think that some of the suggestions about implementing safety fixes that seem to be, you know, of lower intensity as far as construction and so on.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Because that came up a few times. We did a full design of the downtown that looked at this corridor. And we challenged that consultant to try to remove four lanes of traffic from the intersections of Pickering and the intersections of Garden. And you can't maintain that with four lanes of traffic. Because of the queuing that you need and the, to get towards each intersection, you still maintain four lanes of traffic over those crosswalks. So the two items, the number of lanes of traffic through the downtown and how many lanes of traffic that those intersections need to cross are integrally tied. Because we talk about how narrow the road is from door front to door front, which it is. But it's also really narrow from beginning of downtown to end of downtown. And there's not a lot of space to make those geometric changes. So there are trade-offs, no matter which choice we make. And those trade-offs have implications that are beyond that one area. So, you know, we've talked about raised crosswalks. It's not recommended for four lanes of traffic to do raised crosswalks. It's recommended across two lanes of traffic. You know, signalization is really the main safety function when you have more than two lanes. There's certainly, again, things we could talk about. But there's no magic solution that like makes every single person in the audience get all the items that they're looking for within this corridor. If we were designing a brand-new town in a brand-new location without any of the constraints, we might have that. But that really is the challenge that I think we're going to be grappling with for the next several months, is how to reconcile all the different interests and try to get the most preferred project that we can have in this area that we know won't solve every single problem.
Okay. Well, I do think that, I guess I just want to say, I think we definitely heard tonight that people are worried that we are going to force this on the town. We're looking for consensus. We feel, the town feels, that there is a lot of potential upside, a lot of benefit. It's going to be a process, though. It's not, these things aren't easy. And we're in the middle of it. We're just in the middle of it. It's uncomfortable, but it doesn't mean that we have to be on different sides. We're all going to need to work together. I apologize for cutting you off. I feel as though your comment was blaming the town for the situation that we find ourselves in when I feel like this is part of the normal process. So if there's something that you'd like to say, now is a good time.
Thank you. And I appreciate the apology. I really don't think that anyone should, everyone should have the opportunity to speak. So I appreciate that.
That's very gracious.
Because, you know, someone else said it much more eloquently tonight. Just because, you know, we have concerns doesn't mean we're angry. And that's very similar to how I feel. Just because I have criticisms for how we have done things in the past does not mean that I am casting blame on people.
That's fine. That is exactly how it seems to me, which is why I reacted the way I did.
And so--
That was Karen Carpenter, by the way.
I'm sorry?
That was Karen Carpenter.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Karen Carpenter, the singer? Karen Carpenter, who was here tonight.
The one thing I wanted to respond to, there, when we first did, redid the Downtown Center in 2017, I mean, most recently, not first. In 2017, you know, there were plans to do other developments. And that changed drastically after the pandemic. Like, the concept of what that looked like changed. So that was one clarification. The other thing is, just because maybe people on this board have been talking about it for decades, doesn't mean that the public knows. So I think that disconnect really has to be called.
Absolutely. That's true. That's always true. Mary Ann?
So, you know, I think this is a project that has had already a lot of good thought put into it. And we have a lot of information to start to draw from to figure out how to put these pieces together. But it's also clear that we have not, up to this point, right? Gone forward with everybody. So we're now at the point where we're sort of going back to figure out how to get everybody together. And then we'll move forward. It's an important part of the process. We're figuring that out, and we're doing that. So I thank you for taking the moment to say, for taking the moment to say, okay, how are we going to go back so we can go forward? Because I do think there's a lot of good pieces here, and we do need this to be successful. I did realize I had one other question that was written here on my list of six things that I didn't come out with. I'm hoping that at some point, relatively soon, we might create an FAQ for this project, because I do think there's a lot of questions that do have answers, in fact, or at least information about various aspects. And one of the other pieces that I think we sort of heard, but not quite heard tonight, was if something is not working when we move to the pilot stage. I know that there was a concern from people that we've moved to the pilot, and what people heard was we're going to do the pilot for a year. And I think people interpreted that as it's going to be frozen, locked down, static for a year. I don't think that that's true, but I hope that we can help people understand what that might look like, and what our ability to react is, and how, if we understand something is not working, what ability we have to maybe make some changes. So again, that's another question that I raise that I hope can be responded to. Not tonight.
Not tonight. Thank you very much. And thanks for hanging in there with us through the hearing. It's 7:15, and it's time to move on to our next agenda.
Thank you.
What's the rush?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the appointments and consent.
Second. Yeah. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Keith LaFaye, are you still here?
Yes.
Come on up. Hi, thank you.
I feel like I should start with an apology.
You're already full of agenda.
If anything, I apologize. It is, in fact, not 9:15, uh, 7:15.
It was good to be a part of the vibrant discussion.
Yes. Share with us your story about the Human Rights Committee statement.
Yeah, thank you. So thank you for the Select Board for taking the time to allow me to present on behalf of the Human Rights Committee, which I'm co-chair of, and on behalf of the many residents who contacted us over the last four or five months with deep concerns since the new year. So just as a brief overview, as of May 2025, the current presidential administration has enacted multiple executive orders explicitly targeting diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI policies across the federal government. These orders represent a comprehensive rollback of DEI initiatives established under previous administrations. Additionally, the current administration has enacted several more policies that have indirectly impacted DEI-related initiatives. So I'm here tonight to read the statement created by the Needham Human Rights Committee. We believe our words affirm and align with the Needham Select Board's vision statement that explicitly expresses that Needham is a safe and welcoming town, that people are proud to call home, where neighbors care, respect differences, and contribute to the global community. So this is dated on March 25, 2025. So the Needham Human Rights Committee stands firmly in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and against all forms of discrimination. Racism, classism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, and any attempt to exclude or marginalize people have no place in Needham. Our community has always prided itself on being a place where people of all backgrounds can feel welcome, safe, and valued. That commitment must not waver. Right now, many of our neighbors are feeling anxious, frustrated, and even fearful about what the future holds, especially members of the LGBTQIA+ community, who are facing increasing attacks on their rights and dignity. We want you to know, you are not alone. We hear you, we see you, and we stand with you. This is not about politics, it's about fundamental human rights. No one should ever be made to feel less than unwelcome or silenced because of who they are. We commend our town leadership for remaining steadfast in their commitment to fairness and opportunity for all. While national policies may shift, our values as a community must remain strong. We will not be deterred in our mission to ensure that Needham remains a place where everyone, regardless of race, age, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, socioeconomic status, citizenship, disability or ability, or any other basis beyond individual merit, every person is treated with respect and dignity, free from unequal treatment or categorization. But words alone are not enough. Ensuring an inclusive and just community requires action from each of us. We urge residents to be proactive, speak up when you witness discrimination, support local initiatives that promote equity, and engage in conversations that foster understanding. Real change happens when we move beyond statements and commit to making inclusion a daily practice. Since its inception in 1995, the Needham Human Rights Committee has existed to support our community, serving as a foundation for advocacy and engagement. We encourage residents to connect with us. At the beginning of every meeting, whether in person or via Zoom, we hold a public comment period where anyone can speak. We also welcome emails at needham.hrc@gmail.com for those who prefer to share their thoughts privately, or have their concerns added to the public record. Your voice matters, and we are here to ensure it is heard. Now is the time to stand together. Hate, discrimination, and exclusion cannot and will not be tolerated in Needham. Our town must continue to be a place where inclusion isn't just an initiative, it's a shared responsibility. Together we move forward, together we speak up, together we reaffirm that Needham is for everyone. Signed, the Needham Human Rights Committee. In closing, on behalf of the members of the committee, I respectfully ask the Select Board to formally endorse this statement and to authorize the Human Rights Committee to share it with other town boards and committees for their review and potential endorsement. In doing so, we would like to send a clear message to all of our neighbors that Needham remains unwavering in its commitment to equity, dignity, and belonging for all. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your partnership in this vital work. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. I know that this is not an easy task, addressing these issues. They're hard enough to talk about on their own, and then to put together a statement that people are going to feel is very difficult. So I appreciate the work that you and the committee have done. Before we turn to my colleagues for their questions, I would just say, I don't know if you were here earlier tonight, there was a gentleman who stood up for public comment, who asked why antisemitism and Islamophobia were not specifically mentioned in this statement. I wonder if you can speak to the decision not to name them specifically?
So I think that, you know, by time during, time on the Human Rights Committee, we try to come up with words that address the feelings and concerns of all the people in Needham. And we work very hard on it, and we send it amongst our group, and we put a lot of thought and effort into it, and we still don't get it perfect. And so, you know, any resident who feels like our words aren't enough, I, we feel bad about that, and we always work to try to improve it for the next one. And we keep doing that over and over. So, you know, the oversight, not specifying anti-Islamophobia or antisemitism was completely unintentional. And, you know, we tried to address concerns that we hear when we hear them. And so this statement was really prompted by a lot of outreach from residents over the last four or five months, you know, from particular communities that felt particularly threatened. And so that's kind of where this statement was born from. But we always try to do better, but it's never going to be perfect. And I guess the one thing that I always try to take on is, I feel, we feel bad when we don't hit it right. And I think that should come for something, because we're always striving to do more. But no matter what, it won't be perfect. But yeah, I'd like to reach out to that individual and have a conversation.
Sure. Is there, and I'm not necessarily suggesting this, but I'm asking if there is a revision process? This is a final statement?
So this is the statement that the Human Rights Committee has voted unanimously on, and that we're presenting to the Select Board. But, you know, we encourage, the other thing is that, you know, we really, we love to get public comment. We love people to come to our meetings, whether via Zoom or in person, and tell us what they're going through. And, you know, the last, I think I've been on with committee for just about a year and a half, and it hasn't been a very easy time. So we've had, we've had comments that have really helped us understand what our residents are feeling, you know, some privately and some publicly, and we try to accept those equally, and we try to represent those concerns when we do statements like this. So this is the statement that we have. But feedback is something that we're always striving to get into and incorporate in future statements.
Thank you. Kevin, Kathy, do you have comments?
I think it's important that we restate our commitment to making Needham a welcoming place for all.
No, I always thought parking had the hardest in town, but I think you're into my stuff. You guys, thank you for doing this. I know this is hard. I know working words and calling statements together is exacting a difficult process. So thank you for doing it. I do agree we should make this statement. I appreciate that this is in response to all seats in the White House. And I think people are feeling that specific for me. So thank you.
I think I'm starting to lose my voice.
Long night, Josh.
There are a lot of statements. We issued one last year jointly about Islamophobia and antisemitism. And I'm not convinced things have gotten better since then. So do you want to talk a little bit about how effective you think these statements are? And what can you do, if they're not effective, maybe you disagree, what can we do to improve the situation beyond statements?
Yeah, well, I completely agree. I mean, I think that, you know, what we try to do, what our committee tries to do, I think what so many committees try to do, is they try to put words, you know, we try to hear the concerns and, you know, more precisely, I mean, the fear and the, you know, the right uneasiness and uncomfortableness of being in our town, which always feels so welcoming to some, but not to all. And that's really where we're always trying to strive to do more. But the statement is a statement. So I think that, you know, getting the words out does provide comfort to some. But for sure, our goals have always been to be, to turn statements into actions. And so, you know, focusing on things that we do, coming a Race Amity Day next week, the multicultural festival. So I think things like that is what really brings our community together and makes people feel not only heard, but seen and felt altogether. But we're always looking to do more with the, you know, the amount of resources we have. We'll never get to the point where we really want to be. So, you know, we're always looking for feedback to try to do more. And I think a big part of that is open lines of communication, you know, trying to be a safe space for people to come and tell us how they feel, and then to take those things on and try to incorporate them in what we do next.
I think that's key, the safe space, making sure people feel welcome, because the words, like Kevin said, I think you have a really hard job, because your words, you know, can make people comfortable, they can make people welcoming, you know, and, you know, there's a very fine line. There are some other people who may not feel comfortable with those words, or who may feel alienated. And I think it's really important, actually, it's crucial to your mission, that no one feel alienated by the words. I think, I'll be honest, like in the past, I felt a little alienated by some of the words that have been said by the Human Rights Committee. So like, I can talk to you about that offline. I want to make sure that everyone feels welcome, and that the words that are said are welcoming for everyone.
I 100% agree. And I think it's, like I said, I think having the dialogue, having difficult conversations, community conversations on race is another program that we're very proud of. But this is how we can at least, you know, understand where our fellow residents are coming from. And the more we do that, I think the better community that we'll have. And, you know, like you said, trying to find that balance between making people feel heard and understood across, you know, all the beautiful cultures that we have in Needham is the balancing act that we try to always hit right, but we don't try. So, thank you.
So, having come up with the Noori statement, we truly just looked at racism, right, during the pandemic. I know how long and how difficult finding the right words are. Words are important. And I appreciate the work that went into this. I understand Mr. Sherman's point when he spoke to us earlier this evening, that for some reason, right, he worries about what's not said here, even though it appears to me like clearly there was an intent to include that under the category of religious discrimination not being an appropriate thing to be having, happening here. I do feel like this statement, when it was crafted, that there was sort of a moment, right, around the LGBTQIA issues that were particularly strong, that I suspect may have prompted this at this particular time. And you're correct, as Josh mentioned, we've had other statements related to antisemitism and Islamophobia and racism, right, depending on what the moment was, and whose house was on fire at that moment. So I appreciate the work that's done. I agree with the sentiment here, which comes down at the end, right? Now is the time to stand together. Hate, discrimination, and exclusion cannot and will not be tolerated here. And we must continue to be the place where inclusion isn't just an initiative, it's a shared responsibility. I appreciate that language.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you. Yeah, well, thank you for the feedback. And like I said, we really do try to take it on and try to strive to do better every, every time things like this happen, which unfortunately feels much closer together than, than I think we'd all hope for. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? No, I'm sorry, this is not a public hearing tonight.
I look forward to real public debate.
Anybody have motion?
Sure.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to formally endorse this statement and authorize the Human Rights Committee to distribute it to other boards and committees for their review and potential endorsement.
So I'll second it, because I do think we can have discussion about that. So the piece that I've, that I've been sitting here trying to think through, right, with Noori, we did go out and ask for endorsement. And so I'm sitting there thinking, does that mean that we don't endorse other statements? How many statements doesn't mean we will endorse? How do we think about that? And I haven't wrapped my head around that yet.
May I offer a perspective on that? So when the Noori statement was circulated, I was on the Finance Committee at the time, and the Finance Committee was asked if they would endorse it and sign on to it. And the discussion is a very good discussion. For the Finance Committee, it's not a policy board. They felt that it wasn't their job to take a policy position, as much as personally, people may agree with that position. And there was also a feeling of being pressured a little bit. And I don't want anyone to feel pressured to say something or sign on to it. So I think it's fine for boards to voluntarily do that. But I don't think anyone should be stigmatized for not doing that.
So I want to go back, again, thinking about this with the lens that I had from Noori at the time and applying it here. Right, our reason in Noori for asking boards to take it on, right, is the Finance Committee does make policy statements, because a budget is a policy statement. And, and what Noori was asking every board to consider was how that lens impacted the work that they bring forward to the town. How that lens brings forward the most equitable work to serve everyone as well as possible in town. And I think that is hugely important, that that's something that we keep in mind. All of these, all of these areas, there are a bunch of different lenses as we're going through our work, and thinking about how we prioritize, how we allocate money, how we allocate time, all of those factors. So, so I do think asking people to endorse is reasonable. I'm just trying to think about, how do we create something that's as maximal as possible for the town to get behind? That's just what I'm thinking about.
Are you concerned that this is not it?
You know, I'll tell you what's having me hold back, is I do feel, when I read this, as I said, like this feels like it came at a moment related to LGBTQIA. And so it feels like that gets specifically signaled out, singled out here. And it's not, it's not the most important, right? I don't think any category is sort of the most important. But it feels almost like it's giving a the most important. So that's part of what I'm thinking about. How do we create something that doesn't help somebody to feel singled out or overlooked, right? And we're hearing both.
I guess that's what I, my concern is that, you know, to Mr. Sherman's previous public comment, when you start to go down this road of like naming every potential vulnerable group, I recognize he's only talking about two. But I'm just saying that I think there are probably others who would just, you know, feel that, that, well, we named antisemitism, why didn't we name whatever else? And I just wonder if it just becomes like a list. I mean, your point, included, overlooked, it's two sides of the same coin. And I just, I guess, I don't want anyone, certainly those groups that we, you know, popularly recognize, that because they're maybe closer to our personal communities, to feel overlooked. But I don't, but then I don't even know what I'm, what we would be overlooking. I just, I worry about going down that road. So I appreciate the broader categories for that reason, but I do understand that, you know, people could feel overlooked. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I get it. It's just a comment, it's a statement in time. But...
But on the other hand, is perfect the enemy.
It's perfection the enemy, good.
Because it's, it's better, I mean, first of all, this is a good statement, solid statement. But is saying something positive and supportive better than not saying anything for fear of getting it wrong? It's a question. I guess I fall on the side of saying something supportive. I guess I fall on the side of saying something supportive is better.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with this, right? It just gets me to the question of how often are we asking bodies in town to endorse this statement? And I just don't know what our future looks like there.
Yeah, and particularly in the situation that we're in now, where so many people, for so many reasons, are suddenly feeling marginalized. I mean, this could be kind of a long road.
Which doesn't mean you do nothing, but, yeah, it's a lot.
So, do we feel like we want to take a vote on this? Do we want to think about it? Could certainly continue this?
I think that we are not at our best right now.
You put it very well.
All right, is it feasible to continue this until our next meeting? Can you table it?
Yeah, we could table it and bring it back when we're fresher.
I appreciate the consideration, and I think that, you know, this is a particularly difficult time, unfortunately. We've had a hemp open in the last few years, and we do our best to try to address what residents and, you know, the feelings that we get. But, yeah, I appreciate the consideration.
And I totally understand what led to the residents coming about this statement, right? So it's all of those things. I think if we table it, that also gives a chance for members of the public to weigh in, to have some other dialogue. And I would like to come back to it again.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my motion.
And we really appreciate, because I know you guys have been here for hours tonight.
Thank you.
Having a more exciting evening than you probably planned, and less exciting than you probably planned.
It was good to be a part of the discussion, and thank you. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you.
The agenda's almost done.
No, it's not, but thank you. Thank you for lying to us. Okay, Katie King and Dave Davidson, will you join us to talk about transfer of equipment to Norfolk County?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully a dry topic for you all. Just for context, I just want to remind the board that we are in a three-year inter municipal agreement with Norfolk County, and they provide sailor of weights and measures services for us. So this is how you know that when you pump a gallon of gas, you're getting a gallon. When you get a pound of apples, that you are getting a pound. We have to test the scales and the weights and the measures, and this is a really great regionalization effort that we've undertaken over the last three years, so we're one of four communities that the county serves. So I'm gonna have Dave talk about the actual transfer of the equipment, but I just wanted to remind everyone the context and to say, we're two years into a three-year agreement, so I'll be back before you relatively short order. Just revisiting, do we want to extend this agreement? I'd say it's going really well for the town. And we also will probably be coming back to you to look at fees, because we have very outdated fees that we had hoped to update before now, but we just haven't had a chance to get to it. So stay tuned for that.
Yes, Madam Chair, the piece of equipment has been determined to be surplus. The town does not have a functional use for the equipment because the services have been provided by Norfolk County, as Ms. King had mentioned, for sailors and weights and measures. And before that, it was the Commonwealth. So the town itself has not been doing weights and measures services in a number of years. We have had the services provided to us by the county. This seems to be appropriate. Municipal and county government can exchange equipment under chapter 30B, and it is allowed. We would recommend that the board support this to empower the town manager to execute it. It's been noted in the photograph that the piece of equipment is looking for a new home. And with the endorsement of the board.
With the googly eyes.
The googly eyes really makes it.
Madam Chair, I move that the board authorize the town manager to transfer ownership of the weights and measures red light-duty trailer with proofers to Norfolk County for no fee.
Second. Any discussion?
Is it ever envisioned that we would return to doing weights and measures ourselves in the future?
I would suggest not. The cost, when the town was doing it itself, we had an employee doing it, and it was difficult to fill the position when the person left. And this is one of the types of services that are done in cities and towns. It's required to be done, and it is ideal to be regionalized, and I think this is the effective way of doing it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic, thank you.
The echo's on proof.
You can say that for touch the trucks first.
Bring the oil on their hands.
Just one item to remind the community that before your next meeting will be the Memorial Day observance. So the town's observance of Memorial Day is really quite comprehensive and amazing. So, as you know, the board assembles early at the police and fire station, nine o'clock at St. Mary's Cemetery, 9:45 at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at Sth. Baylo Circle, at the Needham Cemetery at 10:30, we're back at the Common at 11:15, and then at Memorial Park by 11:45, where the most people gather, but many people do at least the Common and Memorial Park. So, as we said last night, you know, there's 97 residents of Needham who've given their lives on the surface of their country since the Revolutionary War, and I think the town does an amazing job at work. That's my point.
May I ask, optimistically thinking that it could be at this meeting, but clearly we have too much to do. But at our next meeting, could we have an update on the water restrictions?
Yes, yes, I planned to do it, but I needed to check in a couple of things with the council who's representing us.
Thank you.
But I am excited that the signs were updated, so thank you for that.
All right. So our next item is the town manager appointment board discussion. So it's a meeting on April 1st, 2025. The select board voted to appoint Katie King as town manager, subject to successful negotiation. And Town Council Chris Heap is gonna come up and tell us how it went.
Great. It went. And I'm pleased to report that we're here tonight to talk about a contract that has been approved by the subcommittee who negotiated it. So as you mentioned, after the select board voted on April 1st to appoint Katie King as the new town manager, it also appointed a negotiation subcommittee, and that subcommittee met on April 9th, April 14th, April 18th, and April 25th in executive session to discuss the proposed contract. Some of those meetings involved, well, all of those meetings involved the subcommittee of you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Keen, myself, my colleague Donna Brewer, and some of those included Katie and her council. We discussed over the course of those meetings a broad range of contracted terms, including compensation in its various forms, including salary, deferred compensation, merit awards, reimbursement, leave. And we also discussed numerous non-compensation-based terms that are included in the contract. I would say that the negotiation was hard fought throughout, and that there was a decent divide between the parties' respective positions when we started. But thankfully, as we worked through it, I think there were concessions on both sides, and ultimately, we bridged the gaps in a way that I think was fair to both sides. So you have in your packet this evening the contract that was approved by the subcommittee. The last version of that contract was proposed by the subcommittee after its April 25th meeting. That was a Friday, held on a Friday morning. We circulated that last version of the contract, and Katie King accepted it two days later over the weekend. So that contract has been approved by the subcommittee. The contract itself is based largely on the current town manager contract, although there are several terms that have changed. I circulated to the board, you know, a tracked change version that highlighted the differences between the existing town manager contract and this proposed contract. So I don't know if it makes sense to walk through the whole thing, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
And I'd add, thank you to you and to Donna Brewer, you were very helpful.
Thank you very much.
And just to point out, Donna Brewer, her specialty is HR and contracts.
She is a partner in my firm, and she does most of our employment contracting and work, and has negotiated multiple town manager contracts over the years.
May I ask the town manager, is there sufficient funds for FY24 to cover this contract? Or will we anticipate a transfer from the classification and performance line?
On 26?
26, yeah.
Yeah, we'll expect a transfer. No, I'm sorry. I had it backwards.
Well, I would note just that it was frankly kind of hard fought, surprisingly so to my mind. And I guess one of the things that was really important to us, to the whole committee, was to serve the best interests of the town by ensuring stability and longevity. It's really important to recognize that the way that people get their best pay raises is by leaving and going elsewhere. And we wanted to have a contract that was fair and that not only was attractive and was fiscally responsible for the town, but also served the town in the long run by hopefully preserving Katie in this position for the long term. And so that was really our objective, the town manager, as we know. And assistant town managers are on call all the time and working 16-hour days. They are CEO of the town, and it was just important to us that we started off on the right foot and kept that stability. We've been so fortunate so far to not have had to negotiate in this way in the past, but we recognize that that is special.
I would also add, I think in doing this, we're weighing the cost of top talent, and how do we, and the size of the job, and the size of the town budget. And, you know, it doesn't come cheap. And we do have to, you pay for what you get. And you saw that in some of the other candidates and other towns who were preparing people. But if you want it done right, there's a cost, so.
Discussion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve and sign the employment agreement between the town of Needham and the town manager Katie King, 6th of July 5th, 2025.
Second.
I want to thank the committee for negotiating this agreement. I do think it's really important to have an agreement that's fair to all parties, and I appreciate the sensitivity to wanting to ensure that Katie will be here for a long time. That is our goal, is to have her be successful here for a long time. And the other thing that happens when people are in place for a long time is their salary gets way out of whack. So I think it's important to come in and negotiate to the right place when you start. And I hope that Katie is here long enough for her salary to get out of whack and for us to have that discussion again.
Yeah, and just to be clear, when I said, you know, hard fought, I mean, I think that's exactly it, right? We're here advocating for the town, Katie has a responsibility to advocate for herself as well, and so it's a fascinating process, I'm glad it's over.
Madam Chair, I would just say that I think there is a cost of high turnover, and there is a cost associated with not having the right person. And, you know, going to different events and meeting other select board members and hearing some of their stories, I've always felt that we have been very fortunate. And, you know, it's worth bearing that in mind, those costs of the turnover and the not good town manager. So we don't want that, we want Katie.
And I look forward to working with Katie.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we take a moment to say, "Dad, Katie"?
Excellent. All right, so quickly, because we're all tired, of committee reports.
Sure.
Go ahead.
All right, I'm just warming up. Now, you know, we just came off town meeting, and you can't hear me? All right, we just finished town meeting, and it went, it was really interesting, it's great every time. There was a narrative that I thought kept popping up, that many people in town meeting thought they were just, like, can we do this? We can't keep saying yes to this stuff that we're saying yes to. And I want to remind everyone that the budget is a year in the making, and it was vetted through many committees throughout the year. And what town meeting sees is a lot of decisions to say no to things. The capital budget is basically five years out, it's in there, 2030 is in there now. And we know what we're gonna spend, we know how to manage our money. Town meeting is not the case of the person at 3:00 in the morning, 3:00 AM in the morning, in front of the freezer, realizing they just ate a quart of ice cream by accident. This is measured, this is solid. For instance, I think many Tier 2 requests actually were not funded. Absolutely no new spending requests, all spending requests were deferred. And other than the new inspector, we got a new building inspector.
He's in a couple hours.
Couple of hours. But basically, we aligned the requests with available funds, and not everything was funded. What was brought to town meeting were the things that we thought made sense. So town meeting is saying, may think they're saying yes to everything. What was happening is that we've been saying no to things for the whole year. And I think that's the real story about what goes on when we come into town meeting. So that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, I guess on town meeting, I had a similar perception that there was a vibe in the room, and I think about it in terms of priorities. I think there was people questioning, what are the priorities? And how are they stated? How are they ranked even? And I think when we meet over the summer, I think it's gonna be a good discussion because I think we have to do this every year, and I think this year's gonna be particularly hard.
I don't have any thoughts about, further thoughts about town meeting. I have one other item, so I don't know if anybody else has anything else. I did want to note that we met, I think it was a week ago, as the Affordable Housing Trust. And I just wanted to comment on that meeting in public because it was, it was an interesting meeting to me. We, one of the consultants with the state was actually at the meeting and was available to answer some questions that we had related to Affordable Housing Trusts. And part of what I walked away from in that meeting is that it's clear that there are many towns
many towns that are trying some different things, and it's not clear to me that they've thought them all through. And so part of what we decided was that we needed to stay constituted the way we are currently for a little bit longer and investigate some of these open questions, including the one about loans and how they would work and how towns maintain some control over those funds to ensure that they get used for the purpose that the town intends. And I do feel that in our goal to be responsible to the town about the use of town funds, it's important that we understand that. So clearly, we have more things to learn, and I certainly hope that at the point where we make a transition, and I do hope we make a transition soon, because I think the board has plenty of things to work on, and I think there are also some other people in town who will bring some excellent skills to this work. But I do want to be able to reassure the people in town that we are doing the right thing with town funds and that those funds are going to be used as intended for this purpose of affordable housing, so.
Thank you. I had forgotten about that already entirely, so thank you for bringing it back up. The week's been a blur. I would just, I'm just going to say it again because we are at the beginning of the process with the Tree Committee, and this is when it's hardest to get people to pay attention. So I'm going to say it again and again and again. The Tree Committee is having a public hearing planned for June 4th in Powers Hall. We are still in education mode. That's what we'll be doing. We'll be looking only for feedback. We don't have anything to present to you really. So just come and tell us how you're feeling about the trees and what you want to see. Additionally, the next committee meeting, we will hear from Newton about their tree bylaws, so tune in if you're interested. Also, the town is looking for volunteers for open seats on numerous committees. If you're interested to see the opportunities on our website, and you can, in the same place, fill out a short volunteer form. We always are looking for folks, and we have lots of exciting things for you to do. And then lastly, I would just say it's graduation season, so congratulations to everyone who's not yet graduated from high school, but there's a lot of college grads out there, and then Happy Mother's Day to everyone who celebrates. I would like to move that the Select Board enter into executive session pursuant to exception two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-use union personnel, in this case, the fire chief, not to return to open session prior to adjournment.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
On the chair votes, yes. Good night, everyone.